All right, like to call this meeting to order. We're gonna start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the President Agenda?
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is a opportunity for the public to comment, and I do want to remind the Board members and public that this meeting is being recorded. So if there's anybody from the public that like to comment or I see no hands, um, so I think we'll move on. Board member comment. What's new with the Board members? Anything new and exciting out there that want to share with us? Questions or concerns?
I'd like to share, this is Matt, that, you know, my, my kids have started participating in intramurals after school, some other, um, some other extracurriculars, and they're really excited about it. And I can really see that, you know, in addition to it being springtime, um, you know, these, these changes that we're seeing with, with protocol and guidance changes, and it's really having a positive impact on the children. I think that more than any other winter, they were really feeling, uh, you know, this winter and light at the end of the tunnel, I'm sure, I'm sure that same thing can be said for children across all grades, so I think that's great.
Yeah, absolutely. The great break. Get everybody out. Thanks, Matt. Does anybody else have any comments? Should we move into Superintendent's? Go ahead, somebody?
Thank you Hudson River Bank and Trust. Down there in the consensus, thank you so much.
All right, Sal.
Thank you, Craig. Tonight, we have several different presentations and some information for the Board. So we're gonna jump right in. What you see on your screen is just an overview of the order of which we're going to do that. We've got, I have invited Mr. Thorson to give the Board a brief update on the status of the senior project and some of the student progress this year. I know the Board remains concerned over the impact K-12, but in particular with our seniors. We're here from Lisa Rude. I'm gonna show you, announce our new library director, do a little bit of a COVID update and talk a little bit about the Board election. So with that, give me a second to get Mike's presentation up here. And Mike, you are, you are good to go.
All right, good evening, everyone. So tonight, we're gonna go through the third part. This will be the last part of the budget, and then there'll be, uh, we'll meet again April 15th with finance to go any, uh, any fine tuning of the budget, and we'll have the state revenues by then. But this will give us a good picture where we're at. We're sitting in pretty, pretty good position. I'll show that at the end of the slide. I also have, uh, Transportation. Steve Alinek is here to discuss that and the bus purchase. And then I'll be discussing the benefits, debt service transfers, and then Brian Simon, Director of Special Ed, will be discussing his slide. So if we can go to the first slide. So these are the items. As I discussed, this is the final piece of the budget, and then I'll show a summary slide at the end. But you can see transportation service, you know, really, that's flat at $1,300, you know, on $2 million, it's almost even. Steve was able to consolidate a couple runs, and remember, this includes all salaries, subs, parts, diesel, gasoline, contractual costs, electric heating. And for the majority of expenses, remember, we get about 33 cents back from the state for every dollar we spend. So if we could, is Steve, Steve on sale? Okay, if we could go to the, um, let's go to his slides then. I think it's the third slide.
Can you hear me?
All right, so I'll have Steve discuss the next couple slides. Hey, Steve.
Hi, good evening, everyone. As Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As Mike mentioned, we have a flat budget next year, assuming that everything gets back to normal. He did mention we consolidated a few runs. That's basically because of, really, we had to. The shortage of drivers is an everyday problem here, but it's not just us, it's everywhere. The bus purchase replacement schedule, did you have that slide, Matt? Mike?
Yeah, that's the next slide. Next, or one more sale. There it is.
Well, on that slide, it's, it goes out three years. It's what we did last year, this year, and going out three years. Uh, for 2122, we would like to trade in two large diesel buses for two large gas buses. Now, on that slide, you can see the age and the mileage is not where we want them to be as far as trainings, but these buses have been unreliable for the last few years, and it's mostly because of emission issues. They led to a high cost of ownership for us with parts and labor. They've become unreliable, which leads to increased downtime, increased downtime leads to increased mechanic costs, and it affects safety when you're in route somewhere and you break down. Also, budgeting for maintenance costs not under warranty is unpredictable. So that's why we'd like to trade these two buses in and go the gas route for next year. And we purchased the gas bus last year, and we're very happy with it. Gas buses have a lower initial cost, generally four to $5,000 cheaper. Gasoline costs less than diesel. It's 30 to 40 cents per gallon cheaper. Gas buses do not have to be plugged in during the winter. That saves on electricity. There's fewer emission issues, obviously. And there's less idle time for warm-up, so that saves fuel. There's a couple of drawbacks. Getting gas buses for us, the biggest one is the size of our storage tank. It's a 600 gallon tank. Now, we've had a company come in, give us an estimate about replacing it with a 3,000 gallon tank. They haven't gotten back to us on that yet. In the meantime, I have been in touch with Main Care, and they have agreed to give us fuel cards for the two new buses. Driver would just simply drive down to the Main Care facility as needed and fuel up, and they would bill us. Another alternative would be an above-ground storage tank temporary outside here in the yard. Space could be an issue with that, but if it came, push came to shove, I'm sure we can do it. The other drawback about gas buses is they get less miles per gallon, which brings us to our fuel budget. Now, I go back five years, take the average. Over the last five years, I have to start at 8 to 90 because these last two years have been anything but normal. We generally budget $160,000 for fuel. That's what it's been for the last few years. In gasoline, we have used 21,000 gallons over the last five years on average. Next year, with two new gas buses, we will increase our usage to 2,700 gallons to 23,700 gallons. That's 16,000 miles at six miles per gallon. That's an increase of 2,700 gallon. If we are unable to do one of the solutions I've mentioned before, we usually receive approximately 80 deliveries per year of gasoline. With an increase of 2,700 gallons, that means about an increase of 34 gallons per, increase per delivery. I think it's doable. We've never gotten that low before. A budget $65,000 for gasoline. Out of the 160,000, that means gas can average $2,074 a gallon. Current price is about $2 a gallon, and the current average this year, again, anything but normal is $1.50. Diesel, we usually, over five-year average, about 30, 31,000 gallons. With two less diesel buses, it will decrease our usage 2,300 gallons. That's 16,000 miles per year at seven miles per gallon. I'll budget 95,000 for diesel. That means it can average $3.31 for next year. The current price is $2.31, and the current average is $1.80. At the one mile per gallon difference in the two diesel versus gas, the, the price is the same in, in fuel consumption. We're not gaining, we're not losing. What we're, where we're gaining are parts and labor. Diesel buses. Back when they were making these buses, 192 and 194 there, eight, nine, 10, 11 years ago, the EPA was cracking down on emission standards. So they loaded these buses up with sensors, relays, electric parts that have made these, the components on these buses just break down so quick. So we'd like to get rid of some of them. There's still more coming. 193, uh, it's about the same year, same issues. So that's why we'd like to go to gasoline. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, some questions. Matt Fish has his hand up. Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we've talked about the subject over the last few years. What is our current diesel footprint? Is it, are these the last two buses?
Oh, no.
No.
We have 26. Yeah, this is just the start. We have 26 large buses.
So only the smaller vehicles are currently gasoline?
Yes, the midsize and the small, yes, are all gas. So this is just the start of getting rid of them.
Okay.
You know, obviously, many years.
Yeah, I mean, uh, what's the normal, like, if we start now on the larger buses, what's the fleet cycle time? This is, I don't know how.
If you do two per year, it'll be 12 years, generally speaking.
Okay, that was it.
Chris Spencer has his hand up. Has a question.
So am I understanding that there's a, you know, per bus, there's a savings here going to gasoline, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and roughly, what is that number? And, you know.
The actual number of, it's hard to say. We're saving on electricity, mechanic, labor, and downtime and parts, because.
Well, initial cost too.
Upfront cost.
Upfront cost is, uh, big on the diesel engines, usually. I know Steve said five grand, but I would beg to differ. I think it's around 10.
Okay, so, I mean, are we talking like potentially a $20,000 savings or more?
Well, as time goes on, it's hard to say what, because the price of steel is up right now, and, and vehicles are gonna start costing more, but yeah, potentially.
That, that's what I'm getting to is, um, you know, if, if we know that we want to replace the diesel fleet with gasoline, why, why only two a year? Why wouldn't we increase that to, I don't know, something higher? What, what's the reason to, to not consider that?
To the whole fleet at once or more?
Not necessarily the whole fleet at once, but I'm just asking, what's the magic about two versus?
Well, our, you know, our budget for bus replacement is right around $300,000 per year.
Yeah, this fits into our tax cap, to have a level tax cap. So this is a big, and this would have a big influence if we bought a lot more. But the downside is we paid for the diesel, they're done, we're getting aid on that. So a lot of these diesel go 14, 15 years, and there's, there's work, but it's not like these two that he mentioned, you know, I've asked the same question, eight and nine isn't very good. But a lot of these last a lot longer, so, you know, that's why we wouldn't just go out and replace all them. That's a plan going forward. And just one last thing on the, uh, we're really pushing to get a quote on that gasoline, um, tank, because that, that's what, I'm looking at $100,000 project with Andy and Steve, and that was one of the projects, uh, for next year, and the other one was a generator. So I'm trying to get costs in. I would really love to get the gasoline tank if it comes in, uh, because we want to switch to this, you know, we're gonna need that in the future.
We could always, uh, next year, look at an accelerated replacement schedule, but as Mike said, we've tried to, um, be frugal and keep it within, um, a, a transfer to the budget, transfer to capital in the budget, as opposed to what some districts do is they go out and do a proposition for bus replacement. But we can always, um, down the road, um, take a look at what accelerating it by even one bus a year might be, and get to that, uh, you know, bring down that 12 years to, to a last time.
I think it's a good start. Matt has his hand up. Matt, you have another question or?
Yeah, I, you know, we've talked about this in the past. I think that, you know, economics aside, which it seems like maybe a little bit of a wash or may save us money, we're not sure. There's a lot of benefits to gasoline, right?
Yes.
Um, what are, do, are diesel fleet, um, is there any resale value if we sell these early? Or is that, that's really a losing proposition to cycle the fleet faster?
It's pretty much a losing proposition. Um, the most I've been able to get on trades is, I think I got maybe $2,500 to $3,000. I mean, there's really nothing you can get for these older buses.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe even some of the newer ones are the ones with less miles. I, I know, like, there's not a lot of vehicles out there right now, and I don't know what's happening with prices, but if, if there's a, if there's a COVID-related opportunity here to cycle, because there's not enough buses out there to buy, uh, something to think.
You just gotta, you just gotta be careful with state aid, because we're getting aid on this from the state on that price, so. We can't turn around, sell it and get the money, we get the money from them, and then that, that could be an issue.
You, you depreciate them over the full life of the vehicle?
It's not the full life. Um, I'd have to see how many years, but it goes out a while. We get aid so many years on this.
I think it's 12 years.
Oh, it's, that's a long time, okay.
I just gotta be careful with some of that. That's where you get in trouble.
Okay.
We just gotta find another Partridge family who wants to spend more on the buses.
Okay, everybody else is good?
And then Steve has the, uh, the purchase, the purchase price, this next slide sale. That one.
Right. Uh, yes, 229,000. Um, that's for both buses, large, and we get 30% aid on that, or close to whatever it is, 33 cents.
Yeah.
Back on that.
And Mike, that's on state contract, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Steve and Transportation?
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Good seeing you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So before we get to special ed, I'll go through, uh, you know, the rest of these budget line items. Um, next one's ERS and TRS. That's the Employee Retirement System and Teacher Retirement System. Remember, the Employee Retirement Systems for non-instructional, and the teachers for the instructional employees. And you can see that's going up $109,000, um, slightly. Uh, I was a little concerned last year about this time when the market really crashed about 30%, and then, but we had a very strong finish. Actually, had a great year on the stock market last year. Um, but the ERS rates, there's six tiers. Como is instituted, uh, you know, we had a, we had four tiers for a very long time, and we had a tier five and tier six during my tenure. So that really helped bring down costs, because, for example, on tier one, the rate's 25.2% of the person's salary, and we have one person in that. And then three and four is 15.2, but when you go to tier six, it's 10.5. So we are noticing a shift when people retire out of the three and four tiers, uh, tiers three and four into the five and six. So that has saved us money, that shift over the years. On average, uh, they range anywhere from 2% to a percent increase from last year. And then the teacher retirement system rates, uh, and remember, in, in this example, the 1.7, about 1.1 million is teachers, 600,000 is ERS. If so, if you go to the next slide, I'll show the graph I show every year. Uh, this shows where the rates have been historically. You can see the major swings, even though this is based, you know, they base them on five-year averages. But you can see in the 2000s, we were less than a percent. And then after 08, 2008, you know, we had the, you know, the correct, we had all the issues, uh, on Wall Street, and the stock market went down, but we actually decreased a few years, then we really shot up in 2015. That was, those were a couple tough years, 13 to 14 and 14 to 15, we're at 17 some percent. And then we've been trending downward, and you can see a slight increase the last three years. Um, and so, for example, this year, last year, or this year's 9.53, we're gonna go to 9.8. But knock on wood, so far, the market has been holding, like I said, had an excellent year last year, we're holding steady. So hopefully, we won't have major fluctuations in the couple of years out, but you know, you never know where that's going, so. So, but we haven't had a major, this isn't a major increase, so that's, you know, beneficial. Go back to the other slide, Sal. Then the next line, social security and tax sheltered annuity. Uh, social security is 7.65% of salaries. This isn't going up significantly because we had all those five retirements, so that really lowered costs. Um, and then tax sheltered annuity, we kind of a placeholder, a couple, 2,500 bucks. When people retire, when we can use the sick time, we have a reserve for that, we pay that out of there, um, to offset those costs. Next line's health insurance and dental. I have this in yellow, I'm waiting on finalized, finalized rates, um. This is going up $154,000. The actual rates for the active employees, uh, I, I estimated 2%. Um, and we, there's a good chance we're gonna come in under that, uh, on the Blue Cross Plan. The CDHP was estimated at 5%, so I had that in the model. But we have a lot in the Blue Cross. So rates are very low. There was not a lot of usage last year with COVID. And then the, the way trends were, we had those six, 7, 8% increase, you know, each increase years, then it, you know, it's been leveling out. We're not in the high-risk bucket right now. So this is beneficial. One thing I did do, why there's an increase is we have a retiree health insurance line of 1.12, 1.1 million dollars. And we actually, you're underfunded in that. Uh, we're at almost 1.7. So what I've been doing is I have an accrual that I can use up, and I've been paying it down over time. We have a couple of years left on that. Uh, whenever I have money left in the budget in there, if I can offset using that accrual, I do. So I did increase the, uh, that line, um, 120,000. And I'm going to have to continue to increase that, get that closer to the actual, you know, is, is, you know, until people, uh, you know, people are living longer, and then we're having some new retirees, so that, that, that cost is going up. If we do get a benefit in health insurance and, and, and others talk about maybe getting some foundation aid, any increases, I would like to put to that line to, to, you know, to close that gap more. Um, but like I said, those final numbers, I'll get very soon, and that'll be on the updated budget. Debt service is the principal and interest on our three bonds. Uh, 2019, we did the refunding, you know, we got those at much lower rates, we saved a lot of money. And then we had the 2012 bond opening, and we have the 2019 for our current capital project. We hit our goal of leveling debt service, so you can see that's only a $4,000 increase year to year, 4,600, and it also flows into our tax cap, so that's very important. So we were able to level our cap and not have major swings. Uh, we, we planned that in finance a few years ago. The other lines, transfer to library, we discussed. Sal will be just, I think, talking about the director tonight, that's on the board, so we're very happy to get a new person in here. Um, I've been filling in, and I, I just wanna, you know, thank, uh, the staff out there, Rosemary, Becky, and Carly. Uh, they've been filling in for the director, and then I've been going out a couple of times a week to help out, so that's, that's worked well for the short, short run. Transfer to special ed, that's the 20% we owe for our summer school special ed programs. Uh, we get 80% reimbursed from the state. Um, that's line is similar in years past. Food service, we discussed last meeting with Barb, just a, you know, slight increase. And then the transfer to capital, that's the buses that Steve mentioned, and then I also have the $100,000 project in there. And, uh, remember, we're finishing up the security systems, uh, over the last, what is it? I think it's four years. And now we're looking at either, you know, we're hoping to get quotes this week for a generator or a gas, gasoline tank. See if we can put one of those in there. I'm working with Andy, we'll come up with something for next year. Remember, those projects are 100,000, I have to go through very quickly through the state ed and be done in a year. Uh, right now, we're working on our current $100,000 project, finishing up the security at the, all three buildings. And, uh, they've been starting that project. We have a, I want a deadline, really, I want it end of May, so I can file everything by June, so we're, we're on pace for that. So that really sums up this side, um, of the budget, and I want to go to special ed slide. I have Brian Simon on, on, on call. And there's actually quite a big shift in the special ed, and we don't, you know, it's actually quite a big negative, but I'll let him discuss this.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, before I get into some of the numbers and special education, it's gonna give you a little update of things that have been happening in the department now, also around the COVID issues. We are deep into our annual review season, which is a time of year where we go over progress students have made towards their goals. What have we been doing to support them, and what we need to do to plan for a successful following year for them. Uh, it has been a very rewarding piece, to say the least, you know, I, uh, with everything happening this year, it was certainly a little anxiety-provoking heading into this part of the year. The majority, the large majority of the students have made substantial gains towards their IEP goals, which has been wonderful to hear. You hear the special education teachers and related service providers. The communication they have with the parents that they've had all year. I just can't speak highly enough about the special education teachers and related service providers. Can't say if they would have made more gains if that, if all this wasn't happening, but, uh, the gains have been substantial for the large majority of our students, so I've been very pleased to hear about the progress the students are making. We've also, without the visitors coming to the building, have been doing 100% of our meetings, uh, remotely. So we are on Google Meet for all of our meetings, and another nice little piece about this, which also I was, uh, not looking forward to that aspect of spending so much time on Google Meets. But we have a very high participation rate amongst parents this year. We are over 90% parents participating in meetings. It is much easier for a lot of our families with, to work the meetings around their work schedules when they can just log in and attend remotely. We also have more parents who are separated or divorced with both parents attending meetings. Usually, one or the other would attend, but it just might be a more comfortable situation for some families to do it on the computer. So to have both parents, uh, attending the large majority of the meetings has been excellent also. Uh, so as we return to a new normal, when we have visitors in the building again, I can certainly see it as an option getting it out there for families on who wants to attend in person, and, uh, which families want to continue with this remote system. If it does make it easier for them to attend this way, there still may be a place for it in our future. So it's been a, some positive pieces where I wasn't sure we're gonna be there. Going ahead to some of these budget numbers, the two main components of the budget take up the large majority of it, is our high-cost students and the staff, and the salaries, benefits for our staff, special education staff. When we're looking at, one of the reasons this is going down, uh, the decrease is related to our, some of our high-cost students. We're responsible for special education services aged three through 21. And the services for the students and for those students who aren't getting their diplomas earlier. End of the June of the year, they turn 21. So, for example, if someone turns 21 on September 15th, we're still responsible through the end of June that school year. So we have three students who are turning to, have turned 21 this school year. They were working on their transition plans for adult services for those students, uh, with a lot of help of the programs that they attend. So we have those three students who are aging out. We have one student who is in a program, uh, that is going to be graduating, so that's another positive piece, uh, prior to that student turning 21. And then we have a student in one of our private placements who has met all of their goals and all the indication points that that student's ready to return to an in-district special education program. So we have some, between the aging out, graduation, and a student returning, we have a few less. That said, we have two additional students possibly going out. It looks like that, uh, That said, we have two additional students possibly going out, it looks like that, uh, they need more services than we are able to provide within district and still provide appropriate education. So there's going to be a little bit of a shift, but we're still down a few students for that piece. And as, uh, as Mr. Chadi will say too, this is a very much a moving target. Mr. Chadi is very good at putting contingency monies in place with the budget, a couple of students can move into district. And that, who are high cost students and it can create a substantial shift. But that decrease you're seeing does include with the contingency monies that are in there in case students move into district. The other piece is the staffing is the other big part of it. So we currently have seventeen special education teachers in district. We have, out of those seventeen special education students. We have four of them are working in our special classes for students who need additional level of support. We have two special classes at MED, which are twelve, maxed at twelve students, one teacher and one teacher's assistant. We have one of classes twelve one one at the middle school and we have an eight one two, the life skills classroom at the high school. Those are our four special classes we run within the district. The other thirteen special education teachers provide supports at grade levels for the students. They are doing our co-teaching model, they're doing our direct consultant teacher. They are doing resource room classes for students, so they're doing a variety of those supports. Uh, pretty consistently, some of those salaries are supported through our special education six eleven federal grant. We typically, and this is anticipated for next year too, uh, cover three salaries completely through that grant for our special education teachers and possibly another teacher's assistant. That's what we had this, the last few years, three special ed teachers and one teacher's assistant covered by that grant. Uh, and that we don't get our grant monies and our allocations for our six eleven grant until June. Uh, but anticipating a similar amount, we will also have three special ed and teacher's assistant covered by that grant money. We have, within district are two spe- uh, two speech and language pathologists, two that are covered that we have salaried. Then we have a contract with advanced therapy services, which covers our five day a week occupational therapist. Two day a week physical therapist and additional day and a half of speech and language therapy. Uh, and that's a contracted service that we use. And that kind of covers the bulk of those special education monies, uh, does anyone have any questions for me?
I see no hands up, Brian, uh, you're doing a great job, nah.
Alright.
You keep on keeping on.
Alright, thank you so much.
I liked your, uh, comment on, um, uh, participation in the, uh, from the parents and stuff, I, you know. I think that we probably as a board will have to continue, I think, uh, Matt's kind of touched on this a little bit. When we go back into, um, regular meetings that we still include. Uh, it's just really, you know, it's nice seeing the participation, uh, I always look over at the attendees and, you know, we typically don't get them at our board meetings either, so just, you know, this is obviously much more convenient and, uh, I think it's important.
A committee on special education meeting is always a better meeting when the parents are there.
Yeah, absolutely, I can see that. Great.
A- and any way to continue them participating is something we really need to consider.
Yes.
Given the right location, um, and the right equipment, I don't see any difficulty in doing that. After all, our teachers have been teaching hybrid all, all year, so they can, we can learn from them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Pull up the slide with, uh, do we have the one with the new hire we were discussing? And you want to discuss this one, Sal?
So, um, as the administrative team and I have, um, we meet on a regular basis, um, recently, we were discussing um, our, the beginning of the discussions for our planning moving forward, uh, taking a look at what has occurred this year and the impact on, on COVID and how we have, um, distributed our, um, what we call PPS, pupil personal services, our school psychologists, school counselors and, and social workers. And, um, it became apparent to us that, uh, given the coverage that we need and the complexity of the uh, concerns that we have for students going forward who have been impacted by COVID. Um, we, we are recommending that we hire, uh, an- another PPS staff person, either a school psychologist or social worker. Uh, as you remember, last year, we did not hire additional PPS staff. We did a switch, we took, we reduced the, the number of school counselors. And we added a school psychologist in their place, so it was a net, um, different, there was no net, there was no difference in, in FTEs. This year, we're actually asking for an additional, um, additional person. Though in, the way it, it distributes is pretty simple. We have a school counselor at the elementary school, one at the middle school, two at the high school. We have a, we now have a school psychologist at the elementary school, one at the middle school and one at the high school. But we only have one social worker, um, that goes between, we do have a full-time social worker at the high school. But we have one social worker that goes between MED and the middle school. And Kristin and Mike approached me and the, the halftime in each building is not necessarily meeting the, the needs of our students. And let alone the anticipation that we have when we have more students coming back off of, off of COVID. So, um, we are looking to add that in the budget, the budget numbers that Mike's gonna share with you do account for that. Um, and the whole notion of not deciding whether it's a school psychologist or social worker is, there are some distinct benefits of having the school psychologist because they can do some psychological testing in addition to some of the counseling work, um, that a social worker can do. But we, we wanna put it out, give us some flexibility and find the right person for what we need to augment the strengths of our currently existing staff, of the currently, the current staff. So I don't know if there's any questions, this is just one small part of how we were planning to try to, you know, respond to, um, to COVID and, and coming out of COVID in terms of our road back.
And board members have any questions? Uh, Chris Spencer has his hand up.
I just wanted to comment that I'm, I'm very happy to hear that uh, this will be implemented in terms of increasing this staff. Um, in this capacity, I'm sure it's going to be greatly utilized and appreciated by, by everyone and, um, I think, uh, I think it's a very good sign that we are looking to do that.
Thank you. I mean, it's, you know, not to belabor the issue, but you know, that our students are coming, more and more, our students are coming from very complex uh, home environments, which is challenging, um, and then, you know, to add on to that, um, the unknown, um, added stress and trauma that has, that, that COVID has caused our students, so, and Beth, I see you have your hand up as well.
I guess my, my question is, are we talking, so we're talking about either another school psychologist or another school counselor, I, I'm kind of lost.
No, I'm sorry, um, just to, uh, maybe, what, what I did is just went back, last year, what we did is the recommendation was to reduce a school counselor at MED and replace that individual with a school psychologist, that's what we did last year. There was, that was a net gain of no FTEs.
Yeah.
This year, we're asking to add one FTE and we will go out looking for either a school um, psychologist or a social worker, and depending on the applicants, the skill set, um, we will hire one or the other. So we'll be adding one additional FTE that will, um, service the, um, so we'll have a full-time person servicing both the, um, MED and the, um, middle school. Um, we have, we can, in, in, in the future, we can go into more detail in terms of how we've discussed breaking up the workload. And, and Brian has a real nice plan on how this would, this would play out, should we hire either of those individuals, depending on which, which category we hire in.
Okay.
And with that, I'll turn it back to Mike to kind of bring us home on the budget.
Bring us home, Mike.
Okay, so you've been showing this slide, um, remember the first time we were about a couple hundred thousand in deficit, hundred thousand last meeting. Uh, but now with the retirements, uh, like I said, the health insurance numbers and we're still waiting on the final number, but we're looking at about a one point one five percent increase, very, very slow, uh, low increase in the budget, uh, we kept a lot of things. Even we had retirements, you know, a lot of things went our way this year with special ed. So, and that includes that additional staff, which I'm happy, you know, happy to see we can be able to, uh, do that. Um, and then the revenues, like I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the state to come out with the revenues, so we have that first proposal. I'm assuming, I'm sure it won't be any worse and I'm anticipating it could be a little better, so right now, twenty-eight thousand dollar deficit, but you know, pretty much right on board, um, and a year ago, I never thought we'd be in this position, but we're, you know, we're very good position for next year's budget. Um, and as I stated, but we look out five to ten years in our, our financial planning and reserves and so obviously we'll have to watch, you know, when federal money goes away, that's what we have in the last two times, we gotta, but I think we're very prepared for that, um, with where we stand right now, so, sitting in a very good position, uh, the fifteenth, we'll go through the, I'll meet with finance. We're gonna actually discuss the tax levy increase we, we do every year, sometimes we go at the cap or we go a little less, uh, to help the taxpayers. But we'll have the state revenue numbers at that time, anticipating on any other changes, so, and then I'll have any updates on the budget, uh, any changes. There's a few other items outstanding, but nothing, nothing major at this time.
Looks like, uh, Mike, looks like a great, uh, budget like usual and, uh, anything we can do to for a year like we've had, probably climbing out of, you know, and slowly, uh, that would be great, so it looks, looks good. Glad, uh, we didn't have, you know, we had some pretty big setbacks, but we were able to absorb them with, uh, the fine, uh, physical condition that we're, uh, districts in, so let's keep, keep it up and, uh, and keep, uh, turning out a, a, a smart budget.
Thanks, Greg.
Um, thank you, Mike, and, and the whole business, um, office and the whole team there, thank you. Um, now we're gonna go back to, uh, our agenda and next on the agenda, we've have this, Mr. Thorson, um, in terms of the conversations that we've had at the board level over the last, um, few months in terms of the impact on COVID and particularly at the high school. Mr. Thorson's here to give us a higher level update on what's going on with senior project and some of the student progress there at the high school.
Good evening, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Of course, we can hear you, John.
So first of all, thank you for, um, I know that you had conversations, uh, with Dr. D'Angelo about the senior program and thank you for giving us some flexibility, um, to approach the senior class, um, with a three tiered option. Um, trying to take into consideration some of the difficulties that, that students have been having this year. So, um, most of the information that I gathered is about the seniors, I'll start with the senior program. And then I can discuss a little bit about the academic program for seniors and then that'll allow, uh, I'll ask it and try to answer any questions um, that you might have for me. Um, so on three twelve, um, I met with, um, the senior team and we met that entire day with all of the senior social studies classes, so each class, we had a small group presentation about um, this three, three tiered option for kids to, uh, satisfy the, um, the requirement, uh, for graduation and, um, it went, the, the, the presentation went very well, the, the first two periods, uh, it was kind of like talking to a wall and I think I experienced a lot uh, what teachers are dealing with when they're, um, you know, when they're dealing with hybrid and, and they're talking to computer screens. Um, but no complaints and no pushback. Um, as the day went on, uh, the classes became more engaged in the conversation and uh, by and large, we had no negative feedback at all from the, from the students when we presented the three tier option. Um, I, I probably had at least six or eight students re- reach out to me, um, individually to, to thank me and, and let me know that they weren't sure exactly what, uh, option they were gonna choose, but they felt like having options was alleviated some of the stress that they are dealing with. So, so that made me feel good. Um, what doesn't make me feel, uh, uh, great is the fact that there hasn't been a tremendous amount of movement on the senior project in the last, uh, week and a half. Um, so currently we have, uh, approximately forty-six out of our eighty seniors have, um, made significant uh, progress and are in a situation where, um, they're, they're prepared to meet the requirements as we speak. Um, that might be the lowest requirement, but, but forty-six of the eighty have made significant progress. Fifteen have committed definitively to seeing the project through and shooting for the distinguished, uh, the distinguished grade. Um, and we've got thirty right now who are deciding whether they're going to, uh, stay with the basic level, uh, of compliance or whether they're going to try to take it another step to proficient or, or even another step to the distinguished. Um, I think that there is a number, clearly fifteen kids immediately took the distinguished route. So I think there's a number of kids who really wanted to see this project through. Um, but I think one of the, the hindrances to that i- is they're not, it's just not the same, it's just not the same situation as it's been in the past, um. And the presentations aren't gonna be the same, the, the format isn't gonna stay, the forum isn't gonna be the same, so it's tough to get kids excited a- and motivated to take extra, to take, to take extra on. Um, of the thirty-four students right now who are not set, have, have, are not ready, uh, have not met the re- the requirement. Twenty-four of the thirty-four really have done very little or nothing. Ten have, uh, about partially, about halfway to compliance, um, to meeting the expectation. Um, so, you know, we've got about thirty-four kids who we need to pu- put a lot of work in between now and, um, our hope is of course, April nineteenth is when we want to have this all. We would like to have this, uh, set and put to bed, um, but as we've always done in the past. If students don't make the initial deadline, um, we continue to try to hold them accountable to meet the requirements of the project. Um, so that's the same tact that we'll take, we've got advisors, um, in the mix. Um, reaching out to individual students, we are talking about this group of students in our child study teams. Um, so we've got administrators, guidance counselors, um, on a, you know, mentor type, uh, arrangements with students and teachers. We've got a multifaceted approach to try to reach out to these kids, um, to get them hooked in and to meet this requirement. Um, I, I would say there's probably ten of them, that is, it's, it's gonna come down r- right to the wire. Um, when we talk about academics, the ten, the, the, the ten that I'm referring to are also going to be right down to the wire in their, in their academic courses as well. Um, so that's really where we're at with the senior project, we are over halfway, have already at least met the minimum criteria. Um, we've got fifteen that have a- absolutely committed to, uh, pushing it all the way through to the end. Um, and we've got about thirty-four kids who we've, uh, we've still got a lot of work to do and we've got to get some work from them. Um, everybody has been communicated with, they're, they're, in, in both the senior program and the academic, th- this will not be a surprise to anyone if someone falls short. Um, teachers are communicating with, with students and families, guidance counselors, administrators, um. So, we're, we're trying our best to, um, to, to reach families in the, in the mode that is most convenient for them, whether that be email, Zoom or a, a Google Meet, um, phone calls. Um, I've, I've met with some, I've met with some families outside of school, um, we're trying to, uh, we're, we're just trying to make it as easy as possible and um, I, I, my, my, my experience has been that when you talk with parents, th- they have the same quandary that we have as far as trying to light a fire a- a- and, and get some extra motivation for kids. And as, as I've told you since the beginning of the year, unfortunately, this is the same conversation that I have every week with the principals meeting. We're all looking at about the same population of kids and most of the schools that I'm communicating with don't even have an extra you know, senior requirement, so it's a scary time for all of us and we're just, uh, we're putting a lot of effort in to try to, uh, to try to kid, get kids to where they need to be. Um, before I move on to the academics piece, does anybody, would anybody like to ask any questions about the senior program?
John, the, uh, hands were flying.
I'm sure.
Not even inquire, uh, Destiny, you have a question or a comment?
Uh, yeah, a couple, um, so the April nineteenth deadline, is that a, everything has to be turned in or is?
That's the date that Yes, that's the date that, you know, that would be our presentation date.
Okay, right. And then before pre-COVID times, I couldn't remember. What, I know there's like out of like a hundred and forty points you can get, you needed to get a certain amount. What was that amount before?
Uh, I don't have that information with me because I, I just have everything revised with me, kiddo. I can get that for you easily. It's all.
So, no worries, um, but thank you.
But it is still online, so you should be able to follow it, I believe.
Uh, Chris.
Uh, I think I have two, if I remember what they are. Let's see, the first is, uh, you mentioned there were ten out of thirty four. I think that, um, it sounds like, uh, there's most concern relating to.
I've got ten, I've got ten kids overall right now that are going to be tenuous, very tenuous right down to the end.
So, um, in, you know, previous years, say averaging the past five years, uh, instead of ten, what would that number be?
Uh, it really, Chris, it depends on the year. I remember years when we've had twenty two kids that we were coming right down to the end. I remember years when I, I knew in May that every kid was going to make it.
So this isn't, so this isn't so unusual to maybe have ten kids.
Well, uh, 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 so th- maybe this will give you a little bit more information. When it, when I was going to go into the, the academic portion, we've got, um, I've got twenty, I've got nine kids that we're considering to be cr- i- i- chronic in, in, in desperate situation in terms of graduation. I've got twenty three kids in addition to those nine who are in jeopardy. Those twenty three kids are failing a course or courses currently. Um, aren't up to speed. They've accomplished something, but, but aren't completely up to speed on your senior project. But they haven't failed anything for the year. So it's still quite doable, but, but right now, as we speak right this second, they're failing, you know, uh, two or more classes.
Tw- twenty three.
Twenty three in addition to the nine.
In addition to the nine. So you're saying roughly thirty two kids are in jeopardy, si- serious jeopardy.
As we speak, correct.
As we speak, that ratio sounds high compared to previous years, I'm guessing. Is that?
Quite high. Quite high. The most I can ever remember, Chris, to just, to give you, I, I remember a few years back, we had about twenty kids right now that we were seriously, uh, seriously concerned for, um, and that was kind of an outlier. I would say we're probably normally in, in the area of, of five to twelve kids at this point of the year. We really need to keep our eye on and put some extra work in. So, you know, at least double. At the, at, at the second quarter, when we ran our, our second quarter report cards, um, I had about three times the failures that we normally do across the board. And that is consistent, absolutely consistent with every school district that I, that I, that we talked to.
So I remembered my second question, if I could.
Sure.
In mentioning reaching out to parents, you know, like, um, getting everyone involved and, and trying to individually, you know, help, um, you know, each student, uh, à la carte, so to speak. Is there like a, uh, I mean, what, it just seems like with this number of students, is there a, is there a common theme? Or what, I mean, aside from the obvious of, you know, COVID, is, is there something that can be drilled down to say, well, this is sort of like, uh, you know, this is what we're seeing as a, as a.
I can kind of go, uh, yeah, um, i- i- it's, it's mostly COVID related. And you've got some kids and some people in general, because I'm not going to just, I mean, we're dealing with kids. But I'm seeing this, you know, a- across the board in, in our profession, um, and, and multiple professions. Um, you've got some kids who, th- when they see that they've got a hundred and fifty emails waiting for them, they haven't checked their email, they shut down. Stresses them out. We've got some kids who they just, the minute you've got multiple, they dig themselves a hole. You know, this is something that we deal with, with them on a regular basis with a lot of kids. I was a procrastinator as a, as a, as a student coming up through. Um, but I was here and I was hooked in and I had, you know, teachers and coaches and my family. And we were, you know, everybody had their thumb on me. And in this situation, that's not always the case. First of all, w- we have tried to get more students in every day. This quarter, I've really worked hard to try to get more students to come in every day because we had forty percent of our kids were choosing remote, so I could, I could sneak some more kids in. So we brought in, you know, we started the year with special ed students and five oh four students were invited to come in every day. Then we went to seniors who were in danger of graduating at mid-year, we started bringing in every day. Uh, then I went to students who were failing multiple courses for the year, invited them to come in every day. Um, then we went to students who have diagnosed conditions that aren't necessarily, um, uh, you know, don't have a five oh four or a special ed designation. Um, but they maybe they have some social, emotional or, or some other diagnosis. We wouldn't, then we invited that population of kids in. So I, I've done, and I've seen some real, I've seen great results with that. But for any kid who's a procrastinator or for a, for a kid who, um, you know, looks to avoid because for, for whatever reason, this is the perfect hiding place. A- and it, it makes it, uh, it makes it very difficult. I mean, we've got three kids on the nine of the nine, three kids that we haven't talked to, we haven't talked to them since day one. Not, not a word. Um, we've, we've, we've contacted all of the youth, um, you know, all of the, uh, the, uh, resources that we have outside of school. They're of the age that there's no, there's no forcing anyone's hand. If the family and the student don't want to invest and don't want to, then they just, they avoid a- and, and that makes it very, very, very difficult. Um, and I just think that kids are having a very difficult time in general persevering through this and pushing through it. A- and, um, I, I don't know how you guys feel, but I've certainly had days where I've said to myself, I, the, the last thing I feel like, you know, I don't feel like, I, I can't do this again today. And I think, I think kids are feeling that also a- and, um, it's a recipe for disaster. A- and like I said, I, I, I no one seems to have been able to figure this out, that I've had no, I've had, I've had no one come up with the magic, with the magic fix for this. Um, some other things that I've done, just so you know, um, for the second quarter, I, I made the decision that we wouldn't give any grades lower than a fifty. I haven't made that decision for the third and fourth quarter yet, but it's about time that I make that decision one way or the other. Um, I'm, I told our teachers that I wanted to, uh, for the third and fourth quarter, that I wanted them to accept any and all work that was assigned within that quarter. So normally say a, a teacher would say you've got two weeks to do that assignment. If you don't get it in, there's a penalty. You got an extra week. And if you don't get it in after that, you're out of luck. I'm, I'm, I'm telling teachers, you can assign a penalty, but you have to take that work all the way up until the end of the quarter. So I'm trying to put safeguards in place while, while at the same time trying to still hold kids accountable for learning the material and accomplishing what they need to accomplish. Um, but, but unfortunately, I think that there's just so many different scenarios and impacts that this has on individual students and families that you, you, Chris, I think you said, uh, kind of like an individualized education plan for, it's, that's really what we need to do. That's ex- that was, that is exactly what we're trying to do.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Matt had a hand up.
Matt.
Hey, Matt.
I think this one's easy. Um, maybe for Debbie, I'm not sure. Um, it, was there a board level governance on these graduation requirements? I looked in the policy file, I didn't find anything specific. I'm curious if we owe you, uh, John, a, a consent resolution or, or if that's not necessary.
Man, I don't think so, only because we're still doing the program. I just make, we just made some modifications to it. Uh, we haven't made, Sal, please jump in. I, I, we haven't been able to find anything um, on the docket that, that, that speaks specifically to what the requirement is. So the way I've gone about it is to say, we're, we're still going forward with the senior program. We're making some modifications based on these extenuating circumstances.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure there's nothing in our laps that we're, we're lapping.
Absolutely. We haven't found it, Matt. We looked for it.
Just to reiterate, um, and Debbie's on the call. Um, again, we do not have, we have not gotten to the point where our, the history of our board resolutions have been scanned or OCR'd, where we can do an electronic search. But Debbie went back based on conversations with, uh, individuals who knew how far they participated. And Deb, I, I, I don't think, I haven't talked to you in a week or so about this topic. We were not able to find anything in terms of a board resolution, correct?
That is correct. I think I went all the way back to like nineteen ninety two.
Good, good enough for government work.
That policy manual in ninety two was one page long.
So, thank you for the hunt.
Yes.
Beth, Beth, you have a question or comment?
I got two quick questions. John, of the kids who are either struggling with the exhibition or the senior project or the ones that are failing subjects, number one, are those kids back in school?
Not all of them. I've invited them. Everyone, every one of the seniors who was in date, who we, you know, determined to be in danger of graduation wasn't. We reached out individually and invited them back to school.
Now, what about their parents? Where do they stand on it?
It spoke to their parents, not to the kids, spoke to their families about it.
And they are not responding to it. I mean, I, I guess.
Well, some of them responded and said, no, we, with COVID, we're not comfortable. Some have said, uh, um, some have just resisted.
Yeah, i- it's interesting because after Lisa was talking about the social emotional piece of it last week, I did go to Jason and Merritt and I said, okay, where is Chloe standing in all this? Cause she's got two reaches coming up. And they said, well, she can go to school every other day. Some days she goes on the days she can, and other days she doesn't because half the time she's only got one or two other kids in her classroom. So it's just as easy to be at home, you know?
Well, that, that was absolutely the case before I started inviting other stu- my, my son is home because he can navigate it. Okay. So he's, right now he's navigating successfully. He's doing well on his courses. He doesn't have to wear a mask. He, he's, you know, he's, it, it's bet- it's a better experience for him right now. And, and our deal with, you know, with, with, with my son was you maintain your grades, we have flexibility. Um, and I understand where he's, where he's coming from. So, you know, we haven't forced him. But there's so many different reasons and so many different, for each individual kid, scenarios are just different for everyone.
Right. I was just wondering where, I guess more the, where the families are.
Oh, so here's, here's another interesting one. Parents want their student to come back in person, but not in hybrid. If they can come back every day, they want back in. If it's hybrid, they just, they'll just, just assume stay out. It just, it's confusing and I understand it, but, but these are all the different dynamics that we're trying to, you know, that we're trying to navigate and it's just, it's really hard.
But more than that is, that is life. Everything is, is difficult right now. And if you can't do it, you know, I, I, I don't think we should back off of everything just
Well.
Because of hybrid. I think they need to learn to live with in the real world.
I would have advocated very hard for, i- if you, if, 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 if the Board of Education and, and Sal was, was super resistant to this three tiered approach, I would have really lobbied harder for it. Because I, I, I felt like, because all of, all of these schools that I'm discussed, that I'm talking with are, are dealing with the same thing. Because we haven't found the answer.
Yeah.
The fix all, I felt like we needed to have, we needed to have some type of a realistic response. Um, and, and I think that the basic level of compliance with this is i- very fair.
Yeah, I don't have a real problem with the, with the senior project honor, you know, or the three tiered. I think, I guess I'm really more concerned with the kids who are failing and saying, just throwing their hands up and saying, oh, well.
And I think that, I listen, I, I think what'll, what is going to happen is that a vast majority of these kids will pull it out at the end. But I think we're going to have ten or fifteen kids. It's going to be very tough road all the way down to the end. I think most of them on their own will, will, will kick it into gear and they'll make it happen. But I think we're going to have fifteen kids or so that are going to be, it's going to be nip and tuck all the way to the end.
Thanks, uh, Ted, you have your hand up?
Thank you.
Hi, Ted.
Never so mad as when you're mad at yourself. And I didn't react appropriately to what you had to say back in January, John. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. We could talk about it further if you wish at another time. At the end of the day, uh, Matt took a little wind out of my sails. What can we as a board do to assist? I'm going to say to you, what can we do as individuals? You're talking to nine members of the community right now. What can we do to help you?
Well, I, I think first and foremost, you, you approved, um, in your discussion with Sal, you approved the, the, the flexibility to have the three tiered option. I have reached out to, we, I told the, the students and I told the senior team that the entire Board of Education is supportive and is willing to individually assist students. Um, so that is already out there and I, I know that there's a couple of you that I, that I'm familiar with, right? That we've had the best experiences that I, if I, if I can find a match for a kid where maybe there's no connection here, I think that that has potential. Um, the problem is, is that some of the kids that we're, that we're talking about here, they're looking to stay unconnected. They're not trying to get connected. So to try to force that scenario has been very difficult. Um, but I've told the senior team and the, and our seniors that the Board of Education individually and collectively i- is on board and, um, would like to help. And I, I will absolutely take you up on that if I see that, um, we have a scenario with a kid that we need somebody that might be a little bit more removed than the everyday.
Um, I'm not above making a phone call, wrapping on the door. I mean, that's, uh, uh, inside or outside the box.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And, and we, the bottom line is we may, we, we, you know, we may very well be coming down to that.
And, uh, you know, you always you hear the term, it takes the village. And, you know, just let you know, um, we have at, at least two of the senior, we have the senior team leader and, and several members of the senior team on this call. So I think it's safe to say that they're hearing loud and clear the board's commitment to try to be part of the solution if possible. And I think that's their, you know, John doesn't have to convey that message. You're conveying it directly to them and, and they're listening to you at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted. Uh, Chris, I, you have another question?
Yeah.
We should probably get moving on after.
You're right. Uh, just quickly, I just wondering, you know, I, it, it sounds like, you know, with the seniors, we've talked a lot about that particular situation, you know, the high ratio of, of concern. Um, you know, just looking at the rest of the high school or for that matter, the middle school and elementary school. I mean, are we, are we, you know, are, are those numbers in those other grades? I guess this is more of a question to you, Sal. You know, are those numbers in those other grades, you know, anywhere near? I mean, is, is it something about the senior project that's kind of throwing this off or what? It's, I'm just trying to understand.
I could just give you the high school perspective, Chris. Uh, no, it's across the board. It's, it's, it's nine through twelve. The, you know, the academic pieces. Uh, we ran a, a, a failure, a failure list, uh, a week and a half ago. We actually are meeting on it tomorrow again, the same subject. Um, and I think I had sixty kids who were failing, uh, two or more courses. Now, thirty of them, thirty of those sixty is like a sixty and a sixty two. And me calling him into the office and saying, what are you doing is enough to, next week they're, you know, they're in the seventies. But the problem is, is that then it dips, it just, it just dips. So a kid will, I, I, I had, so when we, we invited these kids back into s- to school, oh, these last three or four weeks, I had a kid that was failing three courses and now, you know, he, he ended up, he, he, right now he's on track to be on the high honor roll for third quarter. So it really, i- i- it really runs the gamut. It really runs the gamut as far as where, where kids are. So sometimes you look at the sticker shock and you're like, oh my God. And then you have one conversation and twenty kids come off the list. So it's, it's hard to, to give you a real concrete understanding, but it's across the board. I think the real issue is going to be more for, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think it's less, at the other levels, it's going to be less about failures and more about gaps and learning.
Yeah, I wanted to echo that, you know, so, and, and again, I don't want to go too far down a rabbit hole. Mike and Kristen are on the call listening in. I've had conversations with both. I think it's less, less, less significant, K five. We, the students have been here. You know, the entire, the entire time in person. We do have some students who are fully remote. We've had some conversations recently at different grade levels. And for the most part, our teachers are on track for this, the curriculum that they would have done in a normal year. And, and they're working their tails off to make sure that students are learning the, the skills that they need to be successful in the next grade level. At the middle school, I think there's, it's probably a little bit of both, right? Mike's worked real hard. Mr. Sted, Mr. Burns, and having conversations individually with students and families. Their plan after surveying the, the families who are in, or, or who have chosen to be hybrid and talking to the families who are remote. Mike has a plan to bring students back fourth quarter. He's already started to see in some of the students that they've brought back in the third quarter that they've made up, as John has illustrated, made up gains that were, that were more prevalent in the first and second quarter. So I think it's there, but I think at the high school, it's, it's accentuated to a greater extent. And, you know, there's an article, there's a great article on On Board this week, I think the one that came in yesterday, page four, you know, in terms of kids being behind. All of our curriculums teach, have opportunities to teach concepts and skills multiple times. And the problem is, at the high school, those kids are running out of time. So we have a, a much better opportunity with our students, K, you know, K eight, K ten in, in identifying if there are any gaps at the end of the day, remedying that at some point in the future. But I think it's, it's much more accentuated at the high school. That's, you know, that's my take on it.
Hey, Matt.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to keep it quick, but I, I wanted to get a comment from John. You know what? I'm passionate about labor development here in the county. We're talking about children at risk of failure. Perhaps not becoming skilled workers in our local labor force and ending up as unskilled workers. I am curious, John, from your perspective, what are we doing and what could we theoretically do, short, like, two-minute answer on this, to try to connect the at-risk population, the at, at-risk demography with those labor development opportunities that are available here in the county after they leave us? I mean, frankly, you, these kids are going to leave you in a couple of months. Maybe some of them are going to come back to you next year, but probably not, right?
Yeah.
There are some other organizations, there's some other, some other opportunities in the county to turn them into skilled labor. I'd, I'd like to know we're doing everything we can. And that might, this might be a longer-term project, right? But.
I, I, so I, man, I can, I can respond. I, I don't think this year we've done a fantastic job with it because I think we moved backwards with the, with bringing people in and making connections and I, I just don't think we've done as good a job of it. For the last three years prior to this, though, there's been a a countywide effort with business alliances and trying to make connections with schools. We've had a few career days. We've had some past students come in and talk to our kids about entrepreneurship and other options besides alternative options to college. And, and, and I feel like Questar has done a much better job in the last five years of making connections to occupations in our region and our community. And their programs have been, I think are much much more respected at, at this time. And I think that there's a clearer path from their preparation in that program directly to job placement. But just being quite honest with you, I feel like this year we probably lost some momentum in that regard. And it's something that I, that I think we need to get back on the plate. I feel like we're in such a a reactive mode in all of this. And, and so many times a subject or a topic will come up. And I feel like, yeah, that's something that maybe fell off a little bit.
This is a good juncture to put a cherry on it. Craig and Pat don't know this yet because I haven't had a chance to tell them in terms of agenda planning, but the board agreed to have Gladys Cruz, the DS, District Superintendent of Questar, come in. And we specifically asked her, and we're going to be asking you to submit questions too, but we specifically asked her to come in and talk about some of the new programs that they're working on. That is going to occur, I believe, on the May eleventh meeting. And, and I think that, that would be a good time to continue conversations about innovative programs that would be out there that may better meet the needs of student interest moving forward in what becomes this new, new world that we're going to live in.
Excellent. I can scratch that off. Future agenda is going to refresh everybody's memory. And so, thanks, Sal.
Thanks, Craig. So we're gonna, John, thank you very much. I, I, I promised John I wouldn't, wouldn't be that long, but I know this is a very serious topic. And the board was very interested in making sure that they were up to date on it. So I appreciate that, John, very much.
No problem.
We're going to, we're going to turn it right over to, to Lisa. I think it's a really good segue. She's been working since she's joined us in November on helping us think about what our path forward will look like. And I know that the board, in, in terms of our previous goals and our future goals, are focused on student achievement, academic achievement, building a well-rounded student. And Lisa, I'm going to turn it right over to you. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and see if you can successfully share your presentation.
All right. I haven't shared with Zoom, so let's give this a go. Let me just get to the right presentation. I think. All right. Let me know if you're, you're good to go.
We are.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, great. And everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes.
So a couple caveats. This is, this is a, a hard, hard presentation to do after what we just digested with John. So I, I just want to preface it by a couple things. First, Craig has been with me in negotiations and I've been quiet a lot. After this presentation, you may wish that I was still so quiet. I'm really happy to share some things with you right now. I want to give you a little bit of insight into how I think and how I approach leadership with the leadership team. So, you know, give you a little bit of return on your investment for welcoming me into your community. There's a lot of really fantastic things that are happening at Chatham. I'm very much a systems thinker, so I view first and foremost, one of my jobs is to knit these things together, to be a connector, so that we have continuity within our system. So a lot of what we're talking about today is a start of a conversation. And that we're not going to solve everything that's happening this year in this presentation. This is, this is the start. So with that, we'll get going. All right. We just have to figure out, there, I have to, I, I could see everybody. I'd rather see everybody, but I also can't see my, see all of my slides. Hold on, let me see if I can get you back. Bear with me just a second. Okay. So these are just some of the framing questions that's going into this work that we're thinking about, you know? What are we doing? Where are we going? How does this help us? And how are we going to close the gap? So I think, in order to understand the perspective of where I'm coming from, there's a couple of things that I value. And one is, I want you to think about when you go to the doctor's office, that's where I've got my little reference to Mr. T on there. Is that when you go to, and if you think of a doctor and you go into their office, you're thinking about they, they're doing a couple of things. They're, they have an evidence-based practice. They are, they have a lot of data, right, that they're collecting data. There might be symptoms from, from something. That they're, they have some clinical expertise. They've got skills and competence and judgment. And they also have values with this in terms of how they're, how, what their bedside manners, how they're a practitioner. And when I think of our teachers, they're, they're really acting a lot in the same way. So the data piece is really important, but so are the pieces of judgment and how, and what their value system is, as well. So that is a, it's, it's one sort of mindset that, that I hold with it. And if you think too, about anytime that you've gone with a persistent issue and to a doctor, and the data says one thing, but there's been something about that doctor, that intuition that they keep digging and they keep finding and they, and until they find, you know, what the, what the issue is. So I just, I just bring this up is that data is just a piece to this entire puzzle. Second thing that I really value is high expectations, that we've got to set them, set them high. I believe that we have to collect multiple types of data that's, that one piece of data does not define us, that our kids aren't numbers. And that we also need to amplify student voice. So, so with this, with my approach to leading is that I, because I started in December, I really have to start with building relationships, relationships and trust. I'm going to ask people to think and be uncomfortable and to think a little bit differently. And if there's not that trust and relationship, then we're not, we're not going to be able to move forward. So as you can imagine, it's, it's a little challenging right now. We're wearing masks. I can't, I can't pop into as many classrooms as I, I'd like to. And I can't, I can't be as present as I, as I would like to in a, in a normal situation. But that is what I'm working on right now. And I've been very, very pleased with the, the openness and willingness, especially of our teacher leader group, our professional development teams, our school psychologists of really putting minds together. Okay, so the couple other things is, I'm really looking to align practices and craft coherence. So that's, that's the mindset that I come from. All right. So just to frame a couple of, of things here. Some, I, I don't know if these would be priorities per se, but I'm, right now, I'm really looking at baseline metrics. I'm looking at what data are we collecting? How are we collecting it? How can we visualize it? How are we making sense of that data? As I mentioned, that building relationships and trust is really crucial to this. I've been working to understand the roles and processes within Chatham, particularly with the social emotional learning and mental health with tiered supports such as the wind block, response to intervention, AIS, child study. I, I feel like I'm doing a little bit of alphabet soup here, but and if any, if any of these, just jump in if you need me to say what they are. With the five oh four, we are almost complete with our five oh four meetings. We're off schedule. But because we couldn't complete them at the end of last year, I felt it was really important to reach out to families and to get those meetings going. So we're almost done with those. And I'm laying the groundwork for continuous improvement. And that's just every, if you think of it as every day, we just want to be a little bit better, but that is a very specific process to go through. Couple other things to mention here. There's a, there's a lot of fatigue. I think, you know, you can hear the passion when John is speaking, but he's, you know, all of our leadership team, they have been doing anything and everything to support our teachers because our teachers support our kids. So one of my priorities is really to support our building level leaders during this time so that they can in turn support our teachers as well. Some of what causes this fatigue is, is all of the uncertainty. So there's some frameworks from Penn State that I'm working under that's thinking about the mindset of how do you, how do you lead through uncertainty? And really thinking about as an organization, what are supports in place for kids? And how can we assure that every kid gets what they need? We've really have to think about that as, at a systems level. And that's, that's where I come into place and I do some of my work. So as I mentioned, supporting the leadership team is, is very important to me. And some of that is going to come with a partnership with the University of Albany, with the New York Kids team, as well as working with Questar and having some leadership coaching as well. That is some stuff that I have written a grant for.
Lisa, can, can I interrupt?
Absolutely.
Chris has his hand up and I didn't want him to lose.
Sure.
Didn't want to get too far in your presentation if there was something backed up.
Sure, go ahead.
Chris?
Thank you. Yeah. You were actually getting to the question. I, I preemptively raised my hand, but you were actually getting to it. I was interested in hearing about the supporting leadership with you Albany as to what, what that was, you know, just expanding on that, but.
Yeah, you know, I can actually, I can jump ahead to that just a little bit and briefly explain what it is. We, so with, and, and Chris, I think you might appreciate this, in a design process, it's, it's, there's not magic with this. There's a very specific process you go through to iterate into, into design. You're in architecture, right? Yeah, okay. So, so with that, with that process, I am looking to model that process with the leadership team. So the first thing that we've done is we surveyed all the teachers. And that survey came, it's a research-based survey that came from the University of Albany that was delivered to all of our teachers, TAs and assistants and really asked questions about COVID workplace burnout, about job satisfaction, just about difficulties for right now, right? So what we're going to do is take that data and with the, with the New York Kids team as well, we're going to take that data and put it through a continuous improvement model. So we're going to, together, as a T, a leadership team, look at the data and start to determine like what, how do we make sense of it? What interventions are we going to put in place? So the site, the focus, there's going to be a, a focus for the second half of the year on supporting teachers to get, to get through the end of the year. But I'm also setting the stage for work that we're doing next year where we can start to pull in some other data streams. So the first data pieces that we're pulling are all from essentially how are our teachers doing right now? And what are we going to do about it? Um. Sure. Good?
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that sounds great.
All right. So in, and I, I I have a, a little bit of a bugaboo with when people say we want things to go back to normal. I think we miss an opportunity because I don't know if many people you would have spoke to before COVID that, you know, most people have some kind of a passion that they want to see something change about education. This is kind of our opportunity that we can do some things to change. So in a, in a normal situation, right, we would look at metrics like attendance and proficiency and growth, student engagement. School climate and safety, right? All of these things. But to be a buzzkill on this, we're actually not going to do hard numbers today. It's because when we, when we start to put numbers forth, and it's just, we, we actually had a somewhat perfect example when we started to talk about failure rates, right? The immediate response is to compare that data to what you know historically, right? And we are in a completely different context. So unless we're setting the stage and we know why we're looking at the data and what we're trying to do with it, then the data can be misinterpreted. So I want to be really mindful of that, that a lot of the data that we have is, is inconclusive right now. I'll pause, I'll pause there. So it's a, it's a balance of, if you think of when you make decisions. Decisions are, we could have all the data in front of us and we still make decisions on emotions rather than the data. So it's really a, a balance of the two. Like, you know, you want to, you know, lose a little bit of weight. You know that, you know, the cookies have too much in it. You shouldn't eat them. You know this. This is your data point. But emotion wins and you eat the cookies. So it's, it's really starting to work through the process of sense-making and continuous improvement to balance those two. And that's something that I, I need to lead the team through. Okay. And I, I pretty much mentioned this, that, in my previous comments, but what we're talking about is makes the data that we have, how do we make sense of it? but what we're talking about is makes the data that we have, how do we make sense of it in terms of what's happening this year? Pass this, so. Some of the data, I don't want it to seem like I'm skirting around data. My, my dissertation was actually all about data, so if I, and I have a geeky T-shirt that says I heart data. So you know, if you're craving it, you're gonna, you're gonna get it at some point, it's just not going to be, now I've got to set the stage for you. So the ways that I've been collecting data right now, I've been attending leadership team meetings. Grade level team meetings have started, so it's my goal within the next, I should have it done in three weeks to meet with every grade level in grades K through eight. And then, then we'll figure out high school after that. Teacher leader meetings, professional development team meetings, I have a weekly meeting with the school psychologists. I've been invited into some classrooms. I've been very careful about that because we're trying to keep everyone in a cohort. But it's very important for me to be connected with what's happening in the classroom. A lot of conversations with families and with students. Of course, there's your traditional data dashboards that are coming from School Tool, that we're going to give you attendance assessment, discipline, you know, all of, all of your formal metrics. I've been shadowing child study meetings, and if you don't know what child study is, it's, child study is basically the, the system that we have at each school to say, hey, you know, we're really concerned about a kid. And we think that there's some issues here and what's the, what's the data that we have to tell us whether, what this issue could be? And what interventions can we put in place? So I'm working pretty aggressively with the child study teams to encourage and require more data collection so that we're relying, the intuition is a good piece to us. Just like I mentioned in our doctor conversation earlier, that intuition is irreplaceable, but the data has to come with it. So we're going to, so with that being said, we're looking at some additional metrics of how we can, a little easier in technology to collect formative and summative assessments. Regional collaboration and questions, I ask a ton of questions. And you know, people actually don't like to be asked questions, they get defensive. I'm the new girl, I gotta, I gotta ask them. This, I did a little snippet this from Twitter today, from ASCD, and I just, I thought it was very timely and it says, you know, with this, your state tests will require is context. What is needed are new ways to think about measure and report on and use student achievement data beyond these test scores. So our test scores don't define our kids. But if we're not, if we're not clearly articulating what define our kids, then we're going to revert back to. Our test scores should be awesome, and that should be a byproduct of what we're doing. That shouldn't be what our focus is. That's, that's my philosophy. This is where sales starts to sweat. Okay, so with, with all of these data points that I've collected, right? Here's some of the things that I've seen, actually, I gotta get, I gotta move a few pages in my notes here. First and foremost, our, our teachers are extremely dedicated. And I cannot emphasize enough the level of professionalism that I've seen, especially in the teacher leader and the professional development groups. So another thing that, but with this, right, this excellence in teaching, there's a very, what, what I've seen is prized in Chatham is a sense of autonomy in the classroom. And that's an angel and a devil because a teacher, what they're doing in their classroom, if it's not knit together, what's happening from first grade to second grade to third grade, right? We're working in silos. And so this, this, the challenge that I have right now is how we harness the knowledge, experience, judgment, right, of our teachers, maintain autonomy that they have, but connect it with each other. So that's a piece that I've noticed. I've noticed that our, you, you have a really kind community that it's, and this does not happen in a lot of places where when you walk through the hallways of the school, it's like especially the high school, kids make eye contact with you and they say hello. And they don't really know me, right? So I could be anyone and it's, it's you, this feeling that you have in a, in a school is, is really critical and important. You see it in the elementary school, it's, it's really impressive. I've got my little upside down triangle there, that's six conditions that hold systemic problems in place. It's a large, this is a large part of what I've been looking at. What systems do we have in place? Because again, we could have really good pockets of things that are happening, but if it's not happening across the system, we're never going to see big gains and big change. My last little picture that I have on here is my little guys' gears. And that is a nod to our building principles because there's so much right now that is operational, that is really, with COVID is really forcing their hands to be less instructional leaders and, and, and really think more about the pragmatics of how, how do we keep our kids safe? How, and it's, it's, I know that it weighs heavily on all of their minds, that there's just not enough hours in the day to do everything that needs to happen. So I, again, view the, my support of them through this year and thinking about how do we get into next year is, is critical. Knowing that they're tired and if I'm going to ask them to do something new and it, they have mental fatigue, I've got to be crafty with it. All right, so some assumptions. It's the, the chicken or the egg thing. What comes first? The problem of practice or the data? Like, do you look at the data first to determine if you have a problem? Or do you determine, hey, we've got a problem? Let me look at some more data to determine if this is in fact a problem, right? So this is, again, some of the, the different mindset in terms of working with grade level teams with data, with working with building level teams on cohort data, that there are systems that I'm starting to put in place for each school. So a lot of people think about data, it's like a swear word, it's a four-letter word. They hear data, then, you know, they think of it like spiders. But it's, it's only, it's only a four-letter word if you don't use it, right? That I look at data in terms of multiple data streams that, and the depiction that I have here of a jewel is really meant to represent our students, right? That there's many, many facets that define our students and, but trying to aggregate them and, and get a comprehensive picture is, is the challenge. All right, so this, you're hanging with me really good. I appreciate it. I'm only seeing a couple glassed over eyes here. So I wanted to give you a little bit of, again, because I'm a, a systems thinker, this is, this is a little bit of, of how I think that this, the why we do what we do is critically important because it should guide the rest of our works. So when we start talking about the, the goals that we've had from the board and the goals that we craft moving forward, the mission, vision and goals, really, they start to illustrate, this is how we do things here. This is, this is what we believe for Chatham. That flows into this idea that we've got to collect multiple types of data and not just high-stake assessment scores or, right? We need a comprehensive picture of what each kid looks like that includes social emotional supports. And we need that data so that we can differentiate for each student. So once we have that data, then we're talking about the structures, right? What structures and mechanisms do we have in the school that we, that allows us to differentiate? So a, a prime example of this is thinking about algebra. A lot of kids struggle with algebra. And especially with COVID this year, we removed some of the supports, like a time and a half class for algebra. If, if we know that historically, and this isn't at Chatham, this is everywhere, kids struggle with algebra, then we've got to build things into the schedule that will help kids get through algebra. So this process is, is all part of the continuous improvement, right? There's a lot of moving parts to this. I put the principals role at the bottom because they're, I, I do believe the principals have the hardest job in the school district. I'm sorry, so, but it's because they really have it. They have so much coming at them from a lot of different angles. They're responding to community, the parents, to kids, you know, they've got to respond to district level administration. It's really, they're, they're at the center and we can't really move forward and enact change. They're, they're a critical piece to this, to this puzzle. So in terms of framing problems and expectations and how we're guiding this process, their, their role is absolutely critical. So what I'm talking about is like, you know, how do we come together as a leadership team to identify our problems of practice and what data is collected? What does success look like? What systems are in place? How can we deepen, deepen our learning and contribution, communication and efficiency? That's really, that's really the, the mindset that I, that I come from. So this, this cycle, when I was talking about continuous improvement and sense-making, this is just an example of all the different elements. It's not, it's not so simple to just, you know, to take, I call it death by spreadsheet, but take a bunch of numbers and sit down with colleagues at a table. Now it's like, what do you do with it, right? So this is just an example of what we would do with that data and the process that we would go with. And we're just going to start doing that with the data we collect with New York Kids. So this, I've got a little quote here, making mental connections is our most crucial learning tool, the essence of human intelligence, to forge links, to go beyond the given, to see patterns, relationship and context. So this, the, the thought that everyone is data literate, literate is an assumption that we shouldn't make. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to be at a place where we feel comfortable enough with each other. It's like, hey Lisa, I have no idea what you just said. Can you explain it to me? Or likewise, if I'm in a meeting and I don't understand something, I'm going to say like, I, I don't know it. But as colleagues, we, we need to learn from each other and make those connections. And that's what I'm trying to coach and lead. So some of the, the main initiatives in terms of crafting this common language, and this is a theme that you can see from elementary, which I'll, I can touch on through, say our literacy program, that there's some really innovative things happening with literacy, but there's not a common language across the curriculum. So we, but literacy is not the, the spot that I'm going to start at yet because literacy is a big one. So we're going to start some preliminary work with literacy this year and, and move into next year with that because we, we need to have a lot of people, you know, come to consensus around this and that takes some time. So Chris, this goes a little bit back to, to U Albany and how we're going to model improvement science with the leadership team. This comes from, if you, you know, you want to geek out on this sometime, this is from the Carnegie Institute with improvement science. And the simplest way I can explain is if you think of a scientific experiment, that it's, it's very rigorous and there's steps that you go through. And there's, you do lots of trials and iterations and reflect and it's, it's a similar type of a process. So we're going to work with the University of Albany to start laying the foundation work this year. And then this summer, the plan is to have a two-day intensive institute where we're really talking about how do we assess our needs and priorities? How are we crafting smart goals? The, the goal is to go into next year with some very clear, with some very clear goals and action plans and also to know, right from the get-go, what does success look for us, like for us in the first quarter, first trimester? And what does it look like in the last? I think I've said enough about context. All right, so let me, let me try to bring it home for you a little bit. Okay, so just to summarize some of what we're, some of what we're doing, we are trying, we are constantly adapting with evolving protocols. So we get changes in regulations, like weekly, if not daily, which it, it's, it's a challenge to function, lead, teach in that environment. We are dealing with an unprecedented amount of social, emotional and mental health needs right now. And the, the addition of a potential school psychologist or social worker is, is a nod to that, that we're really, we're really need to put a plan in place for tier one, that base level of instruction and social, emotional, mental health for every single student. I mentioned the design thinking and improvement science models that we're starting to work with and also thinking about what the new normal is. All right, so the, the why of this really goes back to our mission statement at Chatham. And the things that really resonate with me out of the mission statement are looking at intellectual curiosity. If we look at how, I'm making a generalized statement, but we have a lot of kids right now that are not engaged. And that curiosity piece is, is suffering. And so there's some, in, when you talk about problem-solving abilities and character and ethics, right? These are all pieces that we have as, as a mission statement to our school, but we're struggling with it right now and we're struggling with it for a myriad of reasons. But the why of it, I, I think your mission statement says it pretty articulately.
Lisa, would you, would you like to take a question from Beth?
Sure. When we're talking, you know, I'm just trying to go back and granted, it's been some years since I actually did any academic work at U Albany, but I did my masters and, and postmaster work there. Are we talking about the full educational department or are we talking more about the literacy department? Back then.
I can clarify that because actually I've got a, I've got a couple irons in the fire, to so to speak. The first work is with the New York Kids Team. And the New York Kids Team is out of the Department of Education, I'm sorry, the depart, the School of Education. And what they do is their, their main focus, and it's, I was on their research team as well, so that's my connection with them. That they go into schools across New York State that beat the odds, that are doing exceptionally well under, you know, with socioeconomic factors, right? So like, what, what is the magic sauce about those schools that they achieve, you know, better than their counter, their, their counterparts, right? Kristen Wilcox leads that work. So, and it is all grounded improvement science. So I'm very well-versed in it, but I also am deeply enmeshed in the school. So having her help facilitate that with, that I think provides some additional resources as well. The literacy department is a separate fish I'm trying to fry. And that is working, East Green Bush right now is piloting some work with the literacy department at U Albany to completely revamp. I feel like I've said literacy fifteen times, but literacy.
I know, big, prominent kids background, I understand, but.
So, so yes, I'm, I'm a strong believer in university partnerships and it's not that I just happen to have connections at U Albany, so I bastardize those connections. Other, other universities open for them as well. Yeah, you want to say Chris, I guess?
Matt had his hand up first.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, go ahead, Matt.
Uh, yeah, this is, for anyone who knows, at what point in the year do we go back to review our goals and objectives for the district? Because I would love to see some of this change theory trickle down into our refreshed goals, which maybe we skipped last year? I don't remember.
Yeah, we did.
This is positioning us very well to go into that next cycle. And I think what I have envisioned is we should, we should refresh our memories as to where we were with the existing goals that are in place and the action items somewhere in the May-June timeframe. And then this will position us well with the board retreat this summer and with the administrative retreat this summer. Is to really set our course for future goals.
Great. Hey, Lisa, I'm curious. Have you ever done a mission model canvas?
Done a what?
A mission model canvas? Have you run across those?
No, but you had me intrigued. I will look into it.
Yeah, if, I would love to see one of those for the school, but I'm not the right person to fill it out. Or some similar tool. What's really great about that one is it's it's an all on one page exercise. But I would love to have that going into the goals conversation. Because we have a whole lot of goals. I'd love to to try to simplify instead of adding more on on top of the.
Well, just two quick things about goals in general. One is that I don't think that. If anyone's feeling upset that they didn't redo their goals this summer, you shouldn't, because goals are often very hard to. You like, you know, it's that they had value one year and all of a sudden the next year that they they don't, that you don't have to have new ones. I think you need to. You know, continue them and expand them, but especially if you have goals, you know, around. Like, say literacy, right? Like, the foundations of literacy are never going to go away. So so having having long term goals. Or cyclic goals, I do think is is important. The other pieces I'm going, what I'm going to strongly. Advocate for. Is that we don't try to reinvent the wheel on some of our goals that we look at. We look to research and we look at to schools that succeed and how they succeed and how they got there. And craft some of our goals, you know, knowing the community, knowing. And in in base it as well in in research. So that's, that's gonna, that'll be my slant coming in, my bias.
I think there's also an opportunity to take a look at the four overarching goals, which. We we've made over the last year or two some significant progress in areas like financial stability and in school security. And collapse a lot of those goals and action items and kind of check them off and and start to begin to focus on a little bit more on the other two, which is. You know, wellness and academic achievement, which is really, you know, at the end of the day, why, why we're here. And I think you'll see a convergence in discussions with the board coming up. Over the next six months where I I'm hearing that that's where we should be as we look at revisioning and. We, we, you know, establishing new goals. That's real, it's it's really focused on moving the organization in that in that direction.
Alright, Chris has a question or comment?
Yeah, Lisa and Sal, I just wanted to commend you on, you know, I feel like this is a very exciting moment. In sort of formulating. These questions and, you know, and I just think it's a, I think it's very encouraging for me, you know, I'm very new to the board, but hearing this. Discussion. And openness, I think is very important and very necessary.
Well, you know, I'm gonna take it, because I know she's, Lisa's got just a couple of slides to bring us totally home. And I know this is, you know, every, we've spent a lot of time. Tonight on other things, but I wanted, I wanted to, you know, get Lisa in front of you because. You know, we're, the entire leadership team is going to be stronger. Because of some of this, you know, concept that's, concepts that Lisa's been able to bring in to the group. And so I'm very appreciative and and so thank you for acknowledging that and I'll, you know, let Lisa kind of bring us home here.
Alright, thanks. I'm blushing. So this is a framework for wellbeing. This isn't anything that, this isn't rocket science, right? Like, you're looking around, but. Where I think there's a tendency to focus is really on cognitive development, and we have so many other things that we. That we have to put into place that that cognitive piece. We can't grow that if there's not economic wellbeing, safety, physical health, mental health and wellness. So we're really. We're dancing a dance in order to get to that, you know, that historic schools, you know, you, I think you typically think of cognitive development. But we really are encompassing this this entire. Whole student. I think I just lost my, sorry. I clicked on, all of my images are are linked so that, you know, for copyright. So. So how are we doing this? We're starting this year with with looking at our first tier of support. So looking at our core instruction and really trying to break down instruction and work with. Our AIS teachers and some of our specialists within core instruction. We're looking at social, emotional learning and mental health as well. So if we, the the general consensus right now is that. Everyone's struggling and that we need to, we need to raise the bar on that, on that first level. With that being said, that, as I mentioned earlier, the child study piece and how we really craft. Individualized supports for students is critically important, but that we also do that in a way that's that's consistent and that we can utilize. Our, like, our limited support staff, we've got to utilize them really well. And if we don't have a good system in place, then. Not as many kids can access that that specialist. So the the child study team goes hand in hand. With this. So I waited for my most complicated diagram to be at the end. You know, so if you throw up in your mouth a little bit when you look at this, you know, this is. Trying to put together a couple pieces here in terms of. You know, our mission in terms of intellectual curiosity and academics, equity and empathy, right? And with an end goal that we've got our graduates that are ready to adapt, succeed and contribute. And Matt, I think we're going to be a good partner on some of this, because I'm very passionate about vocations and also. We know, not everyone has a college path, but that there's viable viable locations. And we need to explore that. So I've already laid out some of the things that we're doing right now this year, but looking into, looking into next year. Really coming forth with cultivating student agency. Contributing to a caring climate and meeting high expectations, forging harmonious and supportive relationships and. Building skills and knowledge for life after school. These tenants that are on the side that you probably can't read. Are, they also come from research. So the two that I'm I'm really looking at focusing at towards the end of the year. Is collaborating to define and achieve success. Because I don't, if, put it this way, if I'm asking questions and I'm asking, what does success look like this? And it's, it's not clearly articulated to me, then my, my argument is we have a little bit of work to do on that. And the other piece is co-constructing a humanizing school community, that we, there's a lot of things that are happening of connections with kids. But that's really the foundation for our work. When we go into next year. That's some of the basis that I'm starting this year is that really looking at cultivating culturally responsive, inclusive and facilitated leadership. So really working cohesively together as a leadership team and customizing innovative policies, programs and practices. So I'm looking at those as sort of like the four tenants of what's guiding me right now. So there's your, I I try to tell a story in a page. This, this one's a little messy. That's, so, and the last really piece that I have is, you know, what data are we collecting to identify gaps in growth? And how can we close the, close the gap? I I come from the mindset that if we don't have a process and a system in place to. To talk about the data, to interpret the data and determine what we're using it for, then we're going to make little incremental changes in pockets. But it's not going to show forth in our whole district. So with that. Have I exhausted you? And what questions do you have for me?
Well, I normally on a big presentation like that would ask everybody, just take notes and ask at the end, but. Sometimes the, you lose the.
Attention span of people by talking.
That's what, no, that's, no, I cut in and you you did answer a couple of questions probably coming up, but I think it was great questions. I think it was a great.
You have a copy of the presentation attached now to the agenda. This won't be the, now that we got Lisa talking, we're not going to be able to get her to stop. So this doesn't, this won't be the last time. We're really, you know, should be working, we'll be working very intently with the the rest of the leadership team. You know, we've got a bunch of other individuals. You know, Brian was with us tonight, John was with us tonight. We have principals, assistant principals. We even have Mr. Charlie who just popped back in. We're all one team. We want to work more cohesively together. And again, this was your first. Kind of opportunity to hear, see why we actually hired Dr. Rudd. And I think there's some exciting times ahead. And again, we're certainly welcome to have questions, but, you know. I would, I would also welcome the opportunity for you to think a little bit about this, and we're going to have many more conversations moving forward as a as a board. And look forward to the time when we can get back together like we did a few years ago and and sat together in in the library and worked really. Cohesively with the administrative team to talk about what collect, what what collective goals we have as a board and and as a, as a leadership team. So some good, some good, exciting times ahead.
Physically has her hand up. You got unmute Denise. You got unmute.
Thank you. Will there be means of evaluating this in terms of what student performance as well as adult participation? Or has thought been given to the evaluation of all this, how it will be evaluated, how you will know whether or not you're achieving whatever it is we think we're achieving and so on? Can you hear me?
Not real good Denise. I'm not sure if Lisa.
No, I I can repeat it if, so basically Denise was asking a very relevant question that is like any program. You know, what what is the evaluation component to to measure whether you you're achieving the objectives you set out to achieve?
I appreciate that question. And my answer is going to be a little bit vague in that we, we need more measures. That right now, there's, there's not enough measures and some of the measures. Are very time intensive and like, as an example, in the elementary school, I'm looking at F and P for reading. They're really time intensive for the teachers and they're important to do, but we have to have other measures in place that are quicker. And that we can, we can be a little bit more nimble and adapt on the fly when a student's not achieving a concept. So I've been looking into some, some other platforms that we can use, such as like FastBridge. But also looking at ways to collect quantitative data, I'm sorry, qualitative data. So if there's a, an anecdotal conversation that happens. Or how are we collecting some of those, the messier types of pieces of data to put a a whole picture together? So we've got a platform that we're likely going to use for that. If we don't use that, we'll just probably go old school Google Drive on it. But the the idea is that there's, there's multiple measures to define, that we're defining success. But we also have to do a little bit of work to say, what are those measures?
Thank you. Sure.
Any other questions for Lisa?
So I I put Lisa right in the middle of the presentation and I promise I'm gonna buzz through the rest of these relatively quickly. So. So, yes, thank you immensely. That was Lisa's presentation. So I, as the board knows from my fighter report, but now I've put a a picture to the name. I'm really pleased that tonight you'll be acting on a recommendation from the superintendent to hire our next public library director. Jen McCree comes to us from the lower, the Mohawk Hudson Library Association. She's a library director downstate. We're really excited to have her. The the staff was excited to meet her. And 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 she has, I didn't mention this previous to this, but you'll, as a Chatham community, you'll greatly appreciate this, especially Muriel. She spent something like nine years with the, supporting the Rockettes. She's, she's got a heavy theater background and she was excited to know that there might be some opportunities. Regionally to 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 satisfy some of her other passions in regard to the theater. So she's got quite a unique background and we're really excited. As you know, she's, as Mike stated. I'm sure Mike can't wait to get out of there, but because of some planned notification and a well deserved little break, she'll be starting with us on May 10. And I couldn't arrange it for tonight, but at some point, either just before she starts or when she starts, we'll invite her in so that you can. And hopefully by then, we will likely be in person, but we'll, we'll meet her, we'll invite her in so you can actually meet her. And we can spend more time knowing, getting to know her. So welcome to Jen. Onto my COVID response. I think Matt mentioned this last month. It, the good news is we, this slide is getting quicker and 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 faster. Because we continue to, you know, to to enjoy a fairly favorable positivity rate. I've been sharing this slide with you for months. As of yesterday's data, we're, we're about 2.6%. It fluctuates a little bit day to day. In terms of high, high risk sports. We are, as you know, from the Columbia County Department of Health mandate, we are testing athletes each week. You did, you did know that we had a positive case, a couple of positive cases at the high school last week. And one of which did negatively impact our sports program. We had to. In all likelihood, cancel this Saturday's game. It doesn't look like the prospects to reschedule it are are feasible. So we are likely going to be down a game. The good news is that the season is still, we're still going to have five games and maybe two. Crossover games, seven total. So this game that we're missing on Saturday, the the athletes will still enjoy a fairly decent season compared to some of the other athletes. For fall sports, which is football and girls volleyball, I mentioned last board meeting that we will allow two spectators per athlete for fall. For football. Unfortunately, with the girls basketball, it's still indoors and we're maintaining the same protocols with spectators. They, those games will be streamed. But no visitors will be allowed in in the building. And just a metric trick that I think is kind of interesting, as of Monday morning before testing had taken place in any school. This week, Questor had done somewhere in the vicinity of thirty seven hundred tests and seven positive athletes. So, you know, still very, very low positivity rates among students. And some of those positive cases have disrupted other schools' programs as well. As you also know from social media and and my updates to you, we had an extraordinarily successful vaccination clinic on on the thirteenth here. I I can't thank the the school nurses who did the lion's share of the the work. Just a quick story, I've been working with Mary Noel, a lot to do with proximity, because she's unfortunate for her, she's accessible to me right across the hall. And I let her know that we were going to this clinic and I don't think, if it was a half hour, that's a long time. She went over and drew the diagram and had the workflow. And I'm just so thankful that our nurses, again, have just performed tremendously this year. So shout out to them. Did a hundred and eighty vaccines. We did have, we did invite some members from other districts, but we had well over a hundred people either from. The Chatham employees or the Chatham community take advantage of that clinic. We have put the the seed out there. There's some interest from the volunteers that if Walmart or Walgreens wants to come back and and use our facility. I think we could help them with some volunteers and we can do it again to benefit the community. I don't know if you saw this week that now the. The age has been lowered to fifty plus. And so, you know, if we can help out and from a community perspective. I I would be happy to do so. That brings me to a metric that you might be interested in knowing. I did want to wait until after that clinic was over, but we've crunched some numbers today. And this may be of interest to you that I am very pleased to report, because you know, this has been one of my emphasis over the last several months. But in terms of staff vaccinations, and it is, it is voluntary whether they notify us of this information or not. But I think most staff has cooperated, because if you get into a situation of a quarantine, it's good to know that you're fully vaccinated. But anyway, between MED and the district office, because we, we share this building, I'm pleased to report that eighty two percent of our faculty and staff. Have now been at least, or have been vaccinated or are due to get their second vaccine and be fully vaccinated very shortly. At the middle school, eighty eight percent, so Mike gets the gold star over there. And at the high school, eighty five percent. Equally is impressive across the, across the board. So I thought that was an interesting, interesting number. That's gonna, all along, it's gonna help us hopefully. Stay healthy and minimize the disruption. And then I'm only going to mention this briefly, because I did share an email with the board this week. And it's just so, there's so much to do with this, but basically the CDC has come out with some new social distancing guidelines. We're still trying to at state level interpret them. There is some hope that we can move the social distancing in classrooms from six to three foot, but there's some. Uh, there is some hope that we can move the social distancing in classrooms from six to three foot, but there's some, there's some caveats that we're trying to better understand. And at this moment, as we sit here uh, speaking with you, the New York State Department of Health has not adopted those guidelines, but would likely do so. Um, uh, Dr. Zucker, um, head of the New York State Department of Health made some comments during the governor's press conference yesterday in terms of needing some time to uh. Um, spend with those guidelines and see how they're going to be interpreted and implemented in New York. So with that said, um. Just going on to the school board vote, uh, as most of you know, our board, our school budget vote and board elections will take place on Tuesday, uh, May eighteenth. Um, petitions are available, uh, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a second. They were made available on the nineteenth. They are due back by five PM on April nineteenth, at which time the next morning, uh, we will draw. Um, if there's multiple candidates who are interested in seats, uh, which I'm going to show the slide and how we came up with the number of seats that are available. Um, the, the drawing will take place at nine AM in the superintendent's office here. Debbie will facilitate that and that um, is the order for which you appear on the ballot. Uh, polls are open here um, on the eighteenth from nine AM to nine PM. We are going back to in-person voting. It will take place in the MED gym. A couple of points of interest here, school is in session because we used our staff development day because we front ended them. Uh, this is not a staff uh, uh, development day here. Um, so school will be in session as it has been in the past. We'll make sure that proper security protocols are in place. Um, plenty of parking will be for those who come to vote. Um, and we're also verifying with the board of elections, um, Debbie shared with me today. Uh, there's all the protocols that will have to be in place for voters who are come, who come in person. Uh, absentee ballots are available as in the past and um, they're available under the same um, protocols that were in the past. And, and in addition to that, COVID is a justification this year for uh, requesting an absentee ballot. So if someone is uncomfortable in coming and, and voting in person, um, they can indicate that their apprehension re- is related to COVID. And we will send them an absentee ballots. We do not have to though, mail everyone in the community like we did last year an absentee ballot, which became a very arduous task. Uh, we will have, this is great news, we'll have one uh, machine from the uh, board of elections to process uh, the electronic um, and absentee ballots, the like electronic ballots. We don't have to put in process in, in place, the process like we did last year with people hand counting the votes and thankfully. Um, we appreciate that from the board of elections. And if, just to make sure on, on that everyone's clear on how we came up with the number of seats that are available. Um, it, just a quick overview that basically um, the, the board advanced the resolution to the community to reduce the number of seats. On the board from nine to seven, uh, the way the, the legislation is written, we need to do that in one year. So at the end of July, uh, July, July one of uh, twenty twenty, there will no longer be nine members, be seven members. How do we get there? Um, we have three members who were reelected last year in twenty twenty for a three-year term. And we have, we would have technically had three members whose term would have uh, expired at the end of the school year. For ease of figuring this out, I have put names here. Uh, the three seats that are, that are up for reelection are uh, Denise Beck. And a vacancy that was um, formerly held by um, Graham, who is currently being filled by Ted. And then if you look forward a year, um, the seats for Craig, Muriel and another vacancy. Um, for, that was vacant because of a resignation from Meg Sharon. If you look at this, we would have typically had three seats up, but because we're going from nine to seven, we would only, we only have one seat up this year. However, because the way the legislation is written, um, you only appoint a temporary board member until the next election. So if you're following this, the vacant seat, which I earmarked as J, will also be up this year. So we have the one seat from the reduction and one seat from a vacancy and only two other footnotes here. Um, so the number one vote getter will get the one three-year term. And the second highest vote getter will get a one-year term to fulfill that vacancy which is indicated by J. Okay, one last thing. Next year, we'll be back to three um, seats. However, that third seat will only be a two-year seat because what we eventually have to get to. And we get to it after next year's election is we have to get to a three, two, two, three, two, two, three, two, two. So if that, if I lost you, I don't doubt, I don't blame you. It's confusing, but I wanted to make sure that you, you saw how we got to the point that there are two open seats this year. A three-year term and a one-year, uh, one-year term. Any questions? And this is my last slide and I'm gonna send it back to Craig for uh, the rest of the meeting. But any questions on this slide?
Muriel's had her hand up for quite a while. I think it's from a couple of slides ago, but.
Oh, yes.
Go ahead, Muriel.
Oh, that's just a quick one. Um, I don't know if anybody's had a, if you had any comments on this subject, but I have very much. Enjoyed watching the streaming of the, of the basketball games this year. Uh, I thought it was done very well and um, just enjoyed watching them.
So you may have picked up on this last meeting. I think we're all starting to keep a score sheet of the things that COVID has forced us to do differently. That will never go back. The number one in my mind is a graduation parade, right? That's the number one. Uh, after that, streaming board meetings. Um, and there's a, there's a multitude of, of them. The other one, and Mike's brought this up in an illustration that his in-laws in Brazil have watched his son play JV basketball. That never would have happened in the past. In fact, in this year's budget, as he had mentioned previously, we're looking at installing, permanently installing a camera. That will make it even easier for us to do indoor, indoor sports. So to your point, Muriel, um, I, I don't see us ever going back uh, in terms of some of those things that are. Amazingly simple, but yet in, bring our community into uh, into our district. And when we're doing that, we can't ask for anything better. The same with the people who participate in board meetings like this that may have not had the opportunity through. Um, you know, family commitments and, and uh, childcare to come in to the, to the library. They can still participate and feel part of, on the school community. And as we move forward to having discussions in the school community, which is what's important to them and how we want, what we want from our, for our graduates. And what we're going to do for future capital projects, we have to find better ways to engage the entire community, not just those who show up physically.
Thank you.
Okay, anything, I'm gonna, so Craig, I'm, I'm gonna get while the getting's good and send it right back to you. So back to you in the, in the studio, Craig.
Well, thank you. Uh, you know, I know you're right on the scene there. I can tell by uh, E two.
I thought you heard the train go by. I thought that was.
No. Um, all right, thanks. Uh, we're gonna move on to uh, Pat. Uh, we haven't heard from Pat much tonight. Uh, board committee reports, policy committee.
I guess I was muted. Um, now the policy committee met again on, on last Friday and we've actually been pretty prolific this year. We've, we've actually um, already had a number of policies. Um, posed to the board and uh, we have another three tonight um, for the first reading. Um, and we have, still have a few more that are required, uh, policies that were, some mandated, the updates that we're looking at. Uh, that should be coming to you over the next month or two. So um, we're, I'm not going to let you off easy, easily on that. Um, tonight, um. The three policies are fairly, I think fairly succinct and easy to follow, the changes, but if you have any questions, it now's the time to maybe pose them to me. Uh, otherwise I'll just assume that uh, we, we made the changes that were fairly easy to follow.
Matt, Matt has his hand up?
Yes.
Uh, and Pat, this, this question might actually be for Sal, uh, or maybe for you. I'm looking at um, the transparency provision in eighty-three thirty. I guess it's the first two paragraphs or the, the first paragraph and then there's.
First paragraph that we've added.
Yeah, those are new. Um, I'm curious, um. Where, and this might be for Sal because he's the one reading the policy, right? Should it be passed? Where curriculum starts and stops, where instructional materials start and stop. At what level will we need to make this available? Uh, I think it's great to provide more transparency. I don't, I don't want anything, however, in the way of. Um, teachers being flexible in terms of creation or um, agile. So I, I guess I'm curious how this would work.
Uh, so we, we want to navigate that pretty, pretty carefully. Um, we, as Lisa mentioned earlier, um, autonomy, instructional autonomy is very near and dear to the teachers here in Chatham. Um, the, 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 the underlying essence of this is to just make. Information that would, would normally be readily available, easily, easily accessible. So in other words, um, if, if you look at a demarcation. Um, we had, the board, the board approves the district curriculum, the curriculum's out there, but it's not necessarily in a centralized location. So I had um, some discussions over the last couple of days with one of the administrators today where um, we're going to attempt to just put some better organization. To the information that's already out there. So uh, you could potentially go to a webpage where uh, all the different grade levels will be listed and hyperlinks to. The state approved or the, you know, the state standards and, and um, approved curriculum would be accessible. So if you had a question about something, you know, you're wondering what students do in first grade, you could click on it and here's, you know, here's the um, here's the, the curriculum. Uh, we're not suggesting, uh, and maybe this is where your concern lies, that we're looking um, to go too deep into. Uh, so that really talks about the what, um, the how is the artistry in the classroom? And so how a teacher, uh, what resources they use, how they teach a particular lesson, uh, those kinds of things is not something that we're looking to. Unless a parent felt that something that went home was objectionable or had a question about, then they certainly could bring that to our attention. But we're not looking to, you know, um, uh, talk about uh, scope and sequence and get into the granularity of teaching. That's kind of, that's kind of their purview. Uh, but to provide a little bit more transparency into uh, not having um, the, that people from the outside have to go hunting for questions that might, that should be readily available to them. So I don't know if that, that kind of interests.
Yeah, mo- mostly, um, what is your definition of instruction materials? Because it says here that that's, the parents have full access to review. I guess I don't even know what review means or what instruction.
Well, at any, at any time, if, if a parent has an issue with something that's going on in the classroom, this isn't anything that, that's different.
Um, how long has that been? Because uh, Matt's been reading my notes, it sounds like. And um. There is some redundancies. Uh, eighty-two sixty covers the parent relationship with this. And uh, I just want to step in and say, I'm not at all for the word transparency in the subject line. Um, that kind of uh. It, it implies that at some point, some of our other policies aren't transparent. Um, I'm not uh. So that, that definitely I'm strong on that needs to be strict. And if you want to change the name of the subject, that's fine. But I mean, this is covered through eighty-one ten, a little bit in eighty-one forty and, and definitely in eighty-two sixty. So. You know, adding this paragraph, maybe we ought to pull another policy. I don't know. It, it, I don't know where it came from. I don't. I don't know why, why we had to change the subject line. Um, I appreciate uh, if we gotta do a better job at making these policies easier to find or something. But I don't think we have to state uh, curriculum transparency or any, in any of the policies transparency in a subject. We want to have a goal or, or include it down in the, the readings that we did something to make it transparent.
I think it's great that we, that we're gonna make the, the curriculum summaries um, available. I'm a little bit worried that when we say instructional materials here, the implication is that parents can dig endlessly and very deeply. Um, and obviously, of course, they can foil anything they want, right? Um, but I, I, I don't know what I'm worried about, but it seems very broad here.
Again, that's the benefit of, of a first reading, right? Um, the board.
I guess, I disagree, Matt. I, I, it doesn't seem broad. It actually seems detailed. Um, to me that. It's been pointing some things and uh, I don't, you know, I, I, I don't agree with this, uh, the way it's been changed. I like what they're trying to get out of it, but the wording is wrong. I think that needs more work, Pat.
So try, you, the word transparency, as you interpret it, is that the word that?
Yeah, yeah, that shouldn't be in a subject line. That's, that's suggesting that other, other policies are not transparent, in my opinion.
Craig, what do you think of those bullets? I think they're great.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are redundant, uh, because uh, some of them are already in eighty-two sixty. So I mean, if we need to start doing that or, or we could have simply uh, included eighty-two sixty, I think eighty-one ten covers a little bit of it too, if I. I recall, not positive though. But uh.
Yeah, I don't have anything else. It was just a first reading.
Yeah, no, I know. I just uh, caught me off guard. The, I, I probably would have glanced over it if I didn't see the subject title in it. Brought some curiosity to me. Why are, are we gonna start using language like that in a subject? And you know, once again, like I said, I'm kind of strong on uh, if we state uh, state that.
Yeah, so let me just add a couple of, so you know, we, you know, towards where we had a recent um, inquiry. Um, and it was just, you know, I, I think to the, to the point of these bullets, um, if a parent has a question about a, you know, a. Second grade curriculum, they can easily go and, and find the second grade curriculum. Uh, I don't think there's, I think that's pretty benign. And in terms of the second bullet, that's typically what would be shared with parents, um, you know, at the beginning of the school year or during an open house. Uh, I think it establishes um.
You know, so houses too, typical open houses, that's what you're.
Right, and you know, in, in talking with one of the administrators today, they brought up a good point in that, you know, here's another example, Matt, to answer your question from before. You know, I don't know if we'll ever do an open house the way we've always did an open house. I, you know, in the past, uh, we had an open house and some parents were able to make it, some weren't. It doesn't mean that others who were not, um, didn't have uh, interest, but perhaps through, again, scheduling and childcare and work schedules, they're not able to. But this year, you know, if you recall the um, uh, elementary and middle school, and I apologize to high school if they did the same, they knocked it out of the park. They put together an interactive open house with videos and um, and, and it didn't have to be just accessed uh, in one, you know, time period. It could be accessed over time. And uh, we see that um, that, that's kind of way, kind of the new normal. We, we need to put, provide information. Uh, in multiple venues and in ways where parents don't have to necessarily always be engaged synchronously uh, to get it. So that, that's what this attempt is. I do see after reading it um, a second time, that maybe um, the, the, that first paragraph ends at the end of access to review curriculum. Um, because I think in the next part, if there's any criticism of instructional materials, um, there is, uh, and for the most part. I believe Pat, if I'm correct, everything from that, after that second bullet down is pretty much the pre-existing policy.
Right, we just.
If there is something in terms of uh, you know, a, a parent having some objection to curriculum materials. The previous policy had always given them, you know, any criticism of instructional materials that are in schools. Uh, can be, there's a process by which they can follow to do that. So maybe some tweaks to the first part would get everybody to where they want to be. But I agree, I don't, I have to defend to some extent that we, you know, I'm not trying to, we're not trying, what we do in classrooms isn't um, uh, behind a cloak of secrecy. But you know, our teachers need some protection from the um. From the continuous inquiries that, that potentially could distract them from what they're, they're trying to accomplish.
Pat, you, you had mentioned there was three policies for first reading?
Uh, the, the first one, uh, one was um. Thirty-two, eighty-three, gender neutral, single.
Oh, yes, yeah, all right, yeah, I'm sorry.
It was short, you know.
Yep.
Quarter pager.
Yeah, I did see that, yep.
Then the revision on homeless.
Yep.
And, and use.
Perhaps we can do what we've done in the past, that is the board can share with Pat um, some of their um, feedback. Um, and then we can uh, take another crack at that first paragraph, provide it to the board in a second reading. And of course, we don't have to rush to, you know, an adoption. The board has the opportunity to, to revisit it and then approve it when they feel it's appropriate to approve it.
Was, was that by any, was that a NISBA suggestion, Pat? Was, was that by any, was that a NISP suggestion, Pat? Did that change?
Uh, uh, no, no, that came through, through the board itself.
That came through to a policy or to committee?
Oh, policy, I'm sorry, yeah, policy.
Alright.
Will the second reading be next, uh, meeting?
It could be, if they get, if they work.
It might be, okay.
And I'd be on, you know, at least two of them will be, if not the third.
Right.
But I, I, you know, it would be great if you, if you have any comments to actually throw, send me an email or
Okay.
So I at least can come out and for everybody.
Thank you.
Matt's got his hand up again.
Yeah, and I think this one's probably for Sal. Um, thirty-two-eighty-three, just as we're on this subject. Um, cause it doesn't say here at all. How many single occupancy bathrooms do we have? And are there constraints or restrictions on their use?
Yes, so we, uh, you know, I mentioned this in a previous board meeting. I don't have the number, uh, uh, in front of me, but, um, so any, uh, the way I understand the legislation is the bathroom in my conference room, the bathroom, uh, in any of the, um, kindergarten rooms ain't any, there's, there's a bathroom downstairs here. Any single-use bathroom has to be turned into inaccessible.
Okay, are they, are they available outside classrooms in the hallways?
Some are, yes.
Okay.
We also make some considerations in terms of nurses' offices.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
I know there's some discussion, um, at the middle school level, Mr. Burns is, is here where, um, you know, we may have to. There, there are some people who are uncomfortable with this notion, um, and, you know, we might have to look at potentially entertaining taking a multi-use bathroom and making it into a single-use bathroom. We're kind of gonna see how this all plays out.
Can I just say that, uh, is, so is our, who's, who's reviewing our current facility capabilities relating to this?
Andy is.
Alright, I'm sorry?
Uh, Andy Davey, our facilities director.
Okay.
And I can have something put together for the report, for the board. Um, if not for, for this Friday, the following Friday, in terms of where we are with that. Somewhere along the line, I had the, um, I had shown you the, um, the graphic that now has to be, the placard that has to be in place on each of those bathrooms, indicating that it's, um, available.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the unset implication here is the state's asking us to make these available, but it's not clear to me how available they are, right? Um, all we're doing is relabeling.
Yeah, let me, let me do some more, like, work on that for you.
Okay.
Charlie, can you help me, uh, uh, with that for next? Discuss that. Talk to Andy.
Okay.
Sal, we can circle back to it.
Absolutely.
Um, any other questions or comments, or we'll just, uh, let Pat know through email, that, that's everybody gets. Be true. Alright, thank you. I gotta bring up Pat, uh, finance committee.
Well, unless you want to hear Mike's presentation all over again, I will pass.
Uh, I did have a question and Matt's got his hand up, so Matt, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, just the, the one thing, um, that, uh, Mike didn't announce is, uh, for anyone that hasn't been paying attention, that's the end of the budget presentation. There's no more pieces left.
No, though, we saw the big numbers at the bottom.
Yeah.
That was the end.
That's exciting.
Yep.
We did see the big numbers.
The big numbers, um, have finance or has anybody? I know Pat was on before, um, how's our new, uh, auditor? Uh, claims auditor crew, anybody met him and worked with him yet?
It's a her.
Huh?
It's a her.
It's a her, I thought. I wasn't positive because, uh,
And once she gets her feet on the ground, um, we discussed having her meet the board. Michael arranged for that to happen.
Okay. Alright, any other questions for finance, Pat or Mike? Alright, thank you, Pat. Alright. We're gonna move along here to, uh, R forty-seven. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the memorandum agreement dated March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one with the Chatham Central School Teachers Association. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Is this meeting getting long?
No, I was just muted.
Okay, um, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
This, uh, next, uh, motion, uh, is gonna be for student rep, which we were minus this year in a COVID year, but, um, for new board members, it's actually always a pleasure to have student rep, uh, it's nice to get that little input, even though Destiny's only a little out from, uh, student, uh, she's been a great fill-in and for helping us in that area a little bit. Um, but, uh, R forty-eight, be it resolved that the Board of Education had the following proposition presented to the voters of the district at the annual meeting to be held on Tuesday, May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, shall a student be allowed to serve as an ex-officio, non-voting member on the Chatham Central School District's Board of Education, pursuit of provisions of section seventeen-oh-two of the educational law? So when people, um, ask, when we have added things onto our, uh, voting, uh, promote that, that this is a really good thing. It's great for students and it's great for this board. So, uh, I need a motion to accept this.
Motion.
Alright, thank you, Destiny. Uh, any questions or comments? Matt's got his hand up. I'm not sure if it's new.
Uh, yeah, it's a new hand. I, I'm curious, do we have a student government this year?
Yes, yes, we do.
It came back together.
They've been meeting, uh, virtual, virtually, so it's.
Is, i- is it, uh, I, I, I'm not sure if we're in alignment here, but it seems like we may have an opportunity to include someone before the end of the year. I'm not sure.
It, uh, generally, um, you know, it's, it's generally, um, Mr. Thorson's, uh, recommendation.
I, you know, I don't want to speak for John, but, you know, in previous conversations, we thought this year was just, you know, overwhelming for many students and to put on an additional burden, um, didn't seem appropriate at this point. And to get somebody on to potentially just be on for a month or so, um, doesn't seem. Uh, unless it's someone that, and John, I, I think you're listening in, unless it's someone who would potentially continue on next year and I can have him, you know, think about that more, and if that's the case.
I've gotten some feedback that that future, uh, title, uh, has been pretty important to some kids and some people. So just consider that, you know, uh, a month, a meeting. Um, it's, it's possible, um, we understand if not, but, uh, I've had some feedback, uh, from some, some old board members that were real proud to have been their representative when they were a senior. So, uh, I, you know, I, I do know it's got some, uh, clout to it. Um, and pot, potentially in their, uh, future endeavors. So, um, I think this board's willing to have a a last minute person if it's, uh, if it's possible. If not, we understand that too.
Is that one more thing for John to, to come up with?
Actually.
I'm, I'm not for that.
My feeling is at this point, if I'm getting at what you're saying.
I got a message from John. He will do whatever he can do.
Yeah.
Needs to be a process, he said.
Yep, so, uh, um, he knows, he knows the value of it. Um, and, and we understand also if it, if it can't happen. So, uh, don't, don't add it to a slate of, uh, impossibilities. Any other comments or questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
You're opposed to a student?
For the, yes, for the rest of the year. Uh, for next year, yes.
For next year.
For next year, I'm for it, yes.
We already had approved for this year.
Yes, right, yes, I know that.
What this does is, um, we needed this to be in place because, um, our school attorney has looked over our legal notice, and this will be a proposition, and now tomorrow.
Yeah, I, okay.
Yeah, Debbie has to get this to, uh, published in the legal notices, so, um, we appreciate.
And I thought you were talking about putting somebody on, because we haven't had anybody this year, have we? Because of, because of Zoom.
Yeah, and, and other reasons, yeah, just because of social distancing, so. A crazy year. So are you opposed for this?
I'm all for next year.
Okay, because that's what we're voting on.
Okay.
So everybody's all eyes, no, nobody's opposed. For the record, Deb?
Yes, I just want to make a comment. Um, you're voting, what you're doing right now is you're voting on the resolution to put this proposition up to the voters.
Right.
And they will vote whether we continue with it or not. Yes.
Right, right.
We still don't have that say.
Correct.
And that was why I had the little spiel, uh, when, last, with what it means, promoting.
You have to do it every two years.
Yes. Okay. R forty-nine, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda H through J as written. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Uh, I have one quick question.
Okay.
Uh, I four, is this a new club?
Um, John, could you put that in the chat? The, uh, pride club, which is, um, being shared by Donna and, and Patty?
I don't, I don't believe it's new.
I didn't think so either, but, um,
Uh, I, I think it's great. I'm just curious, because I, I haven't seen that, uh, in the past. Wasn't on the, I guess that's because it's a, it's a flex club. It doesn't make the, the big list, huh?
Right. Um, if.
That was it?
Yeah, um, we've had a pride club, just not in the last three years, correct, Matt? Thank you, John.
Okay. I'm looking for messages, sorry. Rating messages. Items for future agenda. How, any board members have, uh, any hot topics or new things we should look into? Or are we, we busy enough with what we got going on?
I, I, I have sort of a question. It's not a proposal. So I'm thinking about labor development more long-term, and I'm, I'm doing research on my own. I'm curious if anyone has any thoughts on this, to send them to me. But I'm, I'm not ready to propose a particular, um, agenda item at this moment.
Labor development.
Yeah, I, you know, I've been to a lot of business meetups in the county and, um, number one complaint in Columbia County business owners is, we don't have the people we need. Catch twenty-two for economic development in the region. Um, so we're, you know, we're, we're, we're creating labor for those jobs ten years from now.
So, John, John touched, John touched on it a little bit, and, um, typically, uh, the middle school around eighth grade gets a, um, a few days of, uh, business owners that come in, it's career day. Um, we promote, uh, as much as you hear about college readiness, uh, I've always been a strong advocate about our readiness and making sure we're not letting that be on the back burner. I, I help out down at Questar, our local, um, CTE. And, um, in the high school, um, they actually do, I, I think, oh my God, the room's full, people, uh, Mr. Loomis, uh, used to, uh, uh, have, I'm telling you, thirty, thirty.
I've seen that, the, the thing that I think is missing is, um, we get this feedback from business owners that say, we don't have staff available, right? So I go and I call up, um, the workforce development office and I say, well, what are the jobs that you need? And they have no idea. They say, ask the state. The state's got statewide numbers. So I ca, I, I call up the, um, the chamber and the economic development office, and basically no one's done research on, on the needs in the county, yet everyone's complaining. So, I, I don't mind doing some groundwork there, um, a, and I think after that, there may be some opportunity to, to have an agenda item around that.
And, and I think we can, um, probably should hold that off and tailor and keep all, write down your questions and your concerns for, uh, Gladys when she comes, because that's gonna be, uh, probably what we're, uh, basing her time with us on is.
Yeah.
And opportunities and stuff, and I'm sure if Sal gives her a little heads up, or us, the us board members get, you know, to her, Sal, or even to me, um, we can prep her with some of the common questions, and they're gonna have some statistics, some data, um, on why they're going after and targeting some of the CTA classes and stuff, so.
When we get a little closer to her coming, uh, I will, I'll remind the board what you previously had asked
Right.
Uh, me to have her focus on, and then we can, um, we can augment that.
Okay, and Beth has, Beth, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to what Matt was saying. There was a, we originally had a connection through the chamber, where we were supposed to be able to have kids do some sorts of internships with businesses in the community and help prepare them for that workforce. It never happened. Now, right now, they're without a leadership, leader at the, at the, um, at the chamber. They're looking for a new director. I think may, hopefully, maybe after this happens, we'll be able to go back and say, are you ready to do this inter, because Melanie and I went down and actually met with chamber members about this, about four years or so ago. On just this subject, and it just never came to be.
So I've actually, when there was a little bit of a research interest in the district belonging to the chamber a couple of years ago, I, I went down and sat on the Economic Development and Workforce Preparedness Committee, um, with some, you know, with some people from Ginsburg and, 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 uh, Mike from the chamber. Um, and there were a lot of ideas generated, but not a lot of action took place, and I don't want to be critical. However, I do, I do also want to remain to board, when I first, when I was transitioning, um, uh, to, to superintendent here and was shadowing, um, Cheryl, um, she included me on some discussions and, and some decisions where we, um, mutually agreed to subscribe, and we did so for two years, to the Questar Three Business Partnership, um, coaster, if you will, um, we did that, um, um, Mr. Church, uh, who also handles a lot of the, uh, internships for Tech Valley Academy and, and does business development for Questar, did provide a couple opportunities for our teachers. Um, and some other districts have had better luck with that. Um, but that was not an inexpensive annual service. I think we were spending, um, I think we were spending about six thousand dollars a year. And as we looked at our BOSI's expenditures, we didn't see that there was a good ROI coming out of that, uh, in terms of generating the ex, delivering on the expectations that were set. To your point, uh, Beth, it was like, well, here's all these companies that, you know, would reach out to our school counselors and provide opportunities for internships. There are some challenges, as you probably may remember from those meetings. Some, some, some students can't go into some of these businesses for insurance reasons, and it just, there seemed to be just a plethora of excuses, um, that just, uh, you know, made, uh, the constraints so, so, uh, you know, transportation. It was just one thing after another. So I think there's some, some problems that need to be solved, uh, and some barriers.
I have to say that I was actually. I got to say that I was actually approached by Mr. Loomis to take on or somebody was interested in real estate.
Yeah.
And I said, there's really no purpose because I can't afford to put a student in my car and drive them to showings, which is the major crux of my position. So I I at that point, I said, I really can't help you because, you know, there's no insurance that here.
So what those are those? That's a great example of some of the things that kind of crept up and and undermined a well intended. You know, notion to get students connected with business. Not saying we shouldn't circle back around and try to figure out what some of the barriers are. But I do recall that was something I remember Ginsburg saying, you know, he's got, you know, jobs for truck for truck drivers, making a decent wage. He can't find people to sit in the seat. You know, they will pay for training, a good wage. And what I heard what I heard multiple times, and this is something that I think we're responsible for as educators, is the minimum expectation, I just want kids to show up and show up on time ready to do the work. You know, a lot of cases, they weren't even seeing the reliability from some of these students, which was quite disturbing. So anyway, I'm just sharing what
Yeah.
can share with me.
Okay. So we'll we'll see what Gladys has to offer and we can add some more discussion around that time to this. But it's it has been a long running board goal career readiness. So I'm glad you're on that, Matt, as well. It's important for this area especially. So in saying that, we'll move to public comment. We still have some public left. And I appreciate them. And thank you for hanging in here all night with us. I see some representation from Spencer Town and all over the place. No hands, though. Anybody have anything? Okay. Thanks a lot. And John, one mentioned John's chat. Did everybody see it? That club was around three years ago. It's changed names a few times or a little bit. So but I did remember it. Oh, we have a hand in attendees. Mary Noel, can you unlock her, Sal?
She's being promoted to a panel, so she can. There she is, one of our superstars.
A mute.
Does she know?
I I raised it by accident, guys. Sorry.
How you doing? Did you blush when Sal gave you?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yes.
No, thank.
I didn't. I didn't throw them totally under the bus because what they actually did is they came in that Monday and said, we'd be willing to have another clinic if they're willing to do it. And I was like, that's amazing. So.
Awesome.
And it, you know, again, a lot of the success and why people didn't have any weight and got through the line. And I think it was appreciated by, you know, the pharmacists and the pharmacy managers. The 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 nurses that work were drawing down the vaccines. So in previous clinics, the pharmacist had to some in some cases, check the paperwork, draw down a vaccine, administer the vaccine, and then enter it into a computer and keep an eye on the people who were waiting. Whereas we had it down to, you know, a well oiled machine and a lot had to do with the fact that nurses were drawing down the vaccines. They were so nice. They gave me twice the amount. So I appreciate that. Right. It's getting late.
Okay. Well, thanks. And we're going to move. I'm going to be looking for a motion to enter executive session.
Motion.
The reason is collective negotiations. So we have two motions, a motion and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Now we need a motion to appoint Sal as district work pro temp.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do not anticipate any other business afterwards, so we be entering back into open session. So.
So can we have a bathroom break before we start again?
And I promise you, this is extraordinarily quick.
Please.
Yep. Yeah. So you guys, before you leave, you know, you so you're going to close out of this and you're opening up the other link.
Right.
Everybody knows that, right?
Yep.
Oh, so if the other link's in the bathroom, we understand. See you in a little bit.
Okay.